Jim, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you now.
Thank you.
Karen.
Karen.
A little bit of echo. Did you let everyone in from the waiting room? Are we ready?
If you guys are ready, there's fourteen people in the waiting room. They're being let in right now.
Karen, can you hear us? Do I have an echo?
Karen, can you give us the go ahead when we're ready?
We have one more person coming in, just one moment. Okay, everyone is in.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council. It is Monday, June twenty-second, two thousand and twenty. We are reconvening for open session. There are no reportable actions to report from our closed session. It is seven oh three by my watch, and I'm calling this meeting in order. Before we begin, please note that all public meetings will be recorded. When a participant logs in via their computer or calls in to join the meeting, their number and their name and their phone number will be visible to all participants. Unless you are providing public comment, your audio will be muted and your video will be disabled. Persons wishing to be audience members to the meeting may do so anonymously. Anonymous participants, however, will not be recognized for public comments. Persons who we seek to bypass the city's host controls will be dropped and blocked from the meeting. Thank you for your cooperation, Madam City Clerk. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Koops.
Here.
Councilmember Dutton.
Here.
Councilmember Hamada.
Here.
Mayor Garza.
Here. Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. So, um, just a little bit of housekeeping before we move on. I just wanted to inform our public that we are gonna re- uh, take some, one item out of order. We will be taking item eleven A, um, at the end of the meeting. We will be, that will be considered at the end of the meeting. Um, item number seven, a vacation, that'll be myself. And then item eight, it'll be the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Mayor Protem Dankoops. But in the meantime, if you'll please rise and join me for the invocation. Will you please bow your head? Heavenly Father, we are thankful for so many things as we got this evening. For friends, for dialogue, and for the cooperation we see in this city as we work together to improve the quality of life for all. As we begin this meeting, we ask that you guide our thoughts and our actions so that we may have a successful meeting, so that we may accomplish our goals here tonight on behalf of our residents, our businesses, and our community. We ask that you please be with the men and women in uniform in our community and abroad who bravely serve our city and our nation every single day to maintain our peace and our freedom, and that you cover them with your protection, please. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Place your hands over your heart as we pledge together.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mayor Protem. All right, item number nine, city council announcements. Let me start that off. Bellflower City Hall, Public Safety and Public Works Offices will now allow in-person appointments starting today, Monday, June twenty-second. Most services can still be carried out very effectively over the phone or online, which is encouraged because of the COVID-nineteen pandemic that is still with us. The city will be adhering to the LA County Public Health Requirements to ensure the safety of visitors and employees. Those entering city facilities must adhere to a check-in process and submit to safety measures, which include temperature checks, wearing a face covering, and keeping social distance. Seedings, seating, restrooms, and water fountains remain closed. If you do not pass the health screening, you will not be allowed to enter City Hall for your safety and for the safety of others. But you will be offered a flyer of city services that you can conduct over, of city services that you can conduct over the phone or online. Appointments for City Hall can be made by calling five six two eight zero four one four two four. Mayor Protem Dankoops.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The sounds of loud fireworks have been reported recently, and the City of Bellflower reminds all residents to stay safe and celebrate the holiday in a responsible manner. Safe and sane fireworks will be discharged July first through July fifth. If you suspect or observe someone storing illegal fireworks or shooting them off, contact the Bellflower substation at five six two nine two five zero one two four. If you observe someone discharging illegal fireworks, call the Lakewood Sheriff's Station at five six two six two three three five zero zero, and a patrol unit will respond to your area. You may choose to remain anonymous if you like. Penalties for use or possession of illegal fireworks have increased to two thousand dollars per incident. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Dankoops, Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a good evening, Bellflower. Let's see, City Hall will be closed on Friday, July third, and that's in observance of Independence Day. Offices will reopen on Monday, July sixth for appointments. We would wish everybody a fun and safe holiday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor, um, I mean, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you. As many of you know, a recent update to the LA County Health Officer Safer at Home Order now permits public pools to open while following strict reopening protocols. Please know that your Parks and Recreation Department staff has been hard at work developing reopening plans with your safety as our number-one priority. As specific restrictions are lifted, our team needs some time to finalize the plans in accordance with the LA County Health Order and with, in our staff, level capabilities. We are targeting early, mid-July for reopening the Bellflower Aquatic Center for a limited, uh, summer two thousand and twenty operations. Updates will be made available on the city's website through the city's social media platforms over the next coming weeks. Thank you for your continued support and patience as we navigate through this COVID-nineteen pandemic and the daily changes it brings on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton, Councilmember Santenaz.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. If you are interested in receiving the Bellflower E-Citizen Newsletter, you can sign up on our website. This newsletter includes updates, special events, community news, and health and safety information. To subscribe, visit our website at www.bellflower.org and scroll to the bottom of the homepage and click on the E-Citizen Newsletter block. Enter your email address and click Submit. You will receive the newsletter on a weekly basis. If you have any questions or need assistance, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two zero one zero. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santenaz. All right, so next up is item nine B, which is CityNet Year End Review. Mr. Stewart.
So we have Mr. Fieldhouse to make a presentation to the City Council and those listening online about their activities over the past year and the contract to the city.
Welcome, Mr. Fieldhouse. Do you mind, just real quick, if I may, um, just a friendly reminder, I just got, uh, some feedback from the back that if we can all, when we speak, we can speak as close to the mic as possible, so just, just a friendly request. Thank you, sir.
There we go. Yep, I'll move it closer. Is that better? Perfect, yep. Brad Fieldhouse, Executive Director of CityNet. Uh, our term started, uh, April of last year, and it actually goes through June of this year. So the context of what I'm gonna be talking about is what accomplished in that particular timeframe. Our current contract with the city is ten thousand dollars a month. That pays for all the services that are wrapped around in eighty hours, typically, um, two case managers that are doing most of the work here. And that's everything from my time tonight to our admin teams that crunch the numbers, to our finance team that deal with the billing and those sorts of things. But the vast majority of the hours are directly tied to client services. And that's either out on the streets, uh, with your community safety officers or community service officers or law enforcement or our teams going around. But the vast majority of those are either working with folks that are on the streets or ones that we've housed or in temporary situations doing follow-up on an ongoing basis. Part of the charge for us was to make sure that we weren't just an isolated organization, that we were to work collaboratively. And I'm happy to announce that sort of right out the gate, uh, whether it be Kingdom Causes, Bellflower, PATH, LASSA, uh, we have been representing with them in many cases, uh, Bellflower and SPA seven and LCA three, um, throughout the entire of our contract. All right, PowerPoint's up and running. One of the first things that we did when we showed up is we took a census. Every year, the county does a point-in-time count, but we sort of marshaled the forces, worked with a lot of different agencies that work in the city. And we wanted to essentially establish a baseline, to essentially go out and try and interview as many people as possible, kind of see who's in town, and begin to, from then forward, be able to use that list. When we went out, we did a Bellflower census. You guys have seen this. We've actually done a report here in council chambers on this. We identified one hundred and seventy-two individuals in that process. Now, that could have been somebody who we have not seen literally since that day when it was done. It might have been somebody who happened to be in town on that day, all the way to folks that have been street exited, all the way to the folks that are, might still be out on the streets. So we sort of set our own baseline. Um, point-in-time counts have happened on an annual basis. So some of the numbers that you're familiar with, um, LA County does put this together on a yearly basis. You see the numbers reflected there. Um, two thousand and twenty, the count was done in January, but the breakdown, I don't have it. It may be out, but I don't have it, um, in terms of the specific numbers for Bellflower. Every month, we provide, the City Council and the city, we provide what we call our dashboard. This is where we sort of measure, uh, our work and the number of things that we do. We sort of document all the way from contacts to who calls us on the phone, to referrals to other services, to ultimately what is the end game is street exits, which is sort of how we truly measure the success of our work in the sense that they were on the streets and in some capacity, they are now no longer on the streets and they're in some sort of, that's not a CityNet term, that's a HUD term, actually. And that term represents roughly thirty definitions from temporary to permanent. Um, and so we classify all our work in any street exit based on that. What I want to draw your attention to is the number right at the bottom here. That's, this is through May of last year. And you can see that in, uh, or of this year, sorry, May, we had twelve street exits in the month of May, and all twelve of those did go into the brand-new shelter. So I'm gonna kind of give you an analysis here, including current as of today, here in a second. But that's sort of how we measure our work. And again, those are, um, here's the analysis here. So of the forty-one street exits, so we've had, you saw on that slide, we've had eight exits thus far in June. We're still working on other cases, but those numbers will be updated at the end of the month. Um, but we've had eight in addition to those thirty-three. So overall, the forty-one street exits, from the beginning of our work here till, as I stand here today, of those forty-one, thirty-one of those have been temporary, according to the HUD classifications, and eleven have been permanent. Uh, we expect to see in all the work we are doing across lots of cities and counties, we see about an eighty-twenty, that's sort of the normal thing. From the streets, identifying permanent street exits is usually about eighty to twenty. Specifically in May and June, so these numbers are included in those numbers up above, we've had nineteen street exits, um, one permanent in June, and then eighteen, twelve in May that you saw in the last document, and then seven additional ones into the New Hope Shelter. Um, all of those were recently, those are people, we sort of pivoted as our work, we sort of, as our ongoing work once, we knew that the shelter was sort of the opening day. We sort of, everything became all about making sure that this incredible opportunity was clear, and this option was made available prior to opening. And then since day one, we've been referring into the shelter. Um, and as of this morning, this is, this may not be current as I stand here, but as of this morning, there were eight beds available for us to refer into, uh, as of today, this morning. Our focus really before and since May twenty and was to make sure that the clarity of the options was available. So we, obviously, the, the significance, and you see the significance in the investment of the shelter, immediately, options become available in folks that we may be working with and trying to find housing, temporary or permanent situations for them. Obviously, the shelter gives us that immediate opportunity. Once we identify that they're local, connected to Bellflower, then we can refer in, partner with law enforcement and the public safety team here in the city, and also offer other regional options. The reality is, is we're still looking at other, other options, not just this one. This one just is, um, it's a great facility. So we're trying to make sure that we're essentially the sales team for this new opportunity. Uh, outreach and engagement is what we've been working with. So since the beginning, and you see a picture of it there on the, on the right, uh, outreach and engagement is essentially working with law enforcement and public safety to make sure that we partner with them. We're the outreach team, so we believe in outreach engagement. We, we work with law enforcement agents all the time. We recognize that, that together, their outreach efforts and our outreach efforts can actually oftentimes lead to great results. So we've been out educating people and saying, look, here's sort of what's going on. Here's the reality, the shelter has opened. I know you might have heard about it. I'll talk about barriers in a second in terms of what we've experienced. But the reality is, is we believe in partnership with law enforcement. What we have historically been doing is we're, our, our boots on the ground come in a van, and we're here minimum of three days a week. Since the shelter, as we've been here four days a week, and at least two of those hours every day, we are actually not in law enforcement vehicles, but we're partnering with law enforcement. So we're going to particular locations with them, again, collectively educating the, the public about, hey, here's the opportunities, here's the situations, here's what's going on, and we want to make sure that you have, uh, complete notice about what opportunity you could avail yourself of. Um, and we know our role. We are the outreach component of the outreach and engagement or the outreach and enforcement. In many cases, law enforcement has been great. Uh, when and if, we actually don't know sort of what happens once we leave, oftentimes. But that sort of work balance between the two of us has been working really, really well. As we're talking to individuals, um, and as we're looking at sort of the shelter dynamics, and as we talk to people, there's a couple of things that come up regularly, and I just want to kind of put them out there. It's sort of the reality of what's going on. First of all, is obviously COVID, the same reason why we have all these crazy Plexiglas things between all of us here. Um, the reality is, is that there's a fear about going into a shelter that has more people, where they can potentially self-isolate. Um, there's a lot of concern about going into a building with another group of individuals without necessarily seeing it, who may or may not be the most healthy, and they would just choose to say, you know what, until this passes, I'm not interested. We've seen that actually across the board. So comparison, we are involved in the operation in Santa Ana, California. We are operating a four hundred and twenty-five-bed shelter. Um, last night, there were one hundred and seventy-six people staying in a four hundred and twenty-five-bed shelter. Primary reason is that because once COVID came, everybody said, uh, I can fend for myself, and I'm gonna make the best. So that's one of the challenges we got here. So even though the bed, there's only eight beds still available, that's actually, I would chalk that up to a success of the efforts, because even in the midst of that, the vacancy or the bed vacancy is significantly low, relatively speaking. And then history of shelter facilities, I mean, the reality is, is this is a first-class operation. Mercy House has done a great job, City of Bellflower has done a great job investing. But particularly in LA County, there is still that narrative out there, and it's gonna take us, it's been a little bit of convincing that shelter does not mean bunk beds in a big gymnasium, and you just kind of go hang out and you hope you get a bottom bunk. Um, this is a different animal. This is a best-practice implemented shelter, um, with all the amenities. So kind of convincing people that this is not just sort of, this is a new day of an opportunity for you. This is not, you know, maybe a shelter they've been in downtown LA or something like that. It's part of what I propose here before I open up to, uh, Q and A, if you have any follow-up questions, is our goal is, you know, our contract has come to an end, so that before you, I believe at some point, is, is, is a reflection on that. So part of what we would propose, if we were able to continue and had that privilege, would be to continue to fill the remaining beds. I mean, a bed that's available, that's not utilized, is a resource unutilized and untapped for that night. So we get that, that is clear, that that's what we're gonna do, is make sure that those beds stay full. Um, citywide census, one of the realities is we always like to sort of measure against what's reality. As we all know, that homelessness is a, is a, is a transient population oftentimes. So we want to make sure that we continue to have real by-name, not just numbers, but, but names of individuals, so that we know who's here. And it helps us to establish, again, residency and significance of them sort of being in town for whatever reason, helps us sort of, uh, answer that question. And then obviously, we've really developed a healthy rhythm now, particularly with the shelter, actually working with law enforcement. That took a little while to build here, if I'm completely honest. But now, we really have sort of stepped into that space, now that we've sort of kind of got a common mission to support the shelter. It's actually been really engaging and really helpful. So that completes my sort of update, year-to-date, especially the momentum of late. Uh, if I could, I'm available if anyone has any other questions. Thanks for letting me come in person, too, by the way.
Absolutely. Welcome again, and thank you for coming here and updating us on, on these efforts. It truly is a collaborative effort to, to address homelessness here in our city. I, for the record, I don't think we have the new, uh, point-in-time count numbers for Bellflower yet. I know we have it for the spa, but I don't think we have it for...
I believe that's the case. I don't think it's out. We scoured internet today and we could not find it.
Yeah, so, so you're not alone in that. So, uh, with that, why don't we ask you some questions from, on behalf of, of the council here? So Mayor Protem Koops.
Yep.
The first brought on was that we had discussion about how churches in any city have taken responsibility for many of the homeless. And some of the things they do are helpful, and other things are not as helpful. So I'm not quite sure where Mercy House coordinates with you and with the churches, or how does that work through?
Yeah, great question. Uh, I mean, so we have individuals that support us. For example, in our contract, uh, we did not build the, as we were negotiating with the city, there was not a van that was included in our proposal. Um, so we have a van, we bring it out here. That's, we tap into our donated dollars to give us transport, which is fine, because there are a lot of community members that are often looking for, I want to do something, what can I do? And then they can donate to us and support and undergo the project. As it relates to locally, Kingdom Causes Bellflower has done a phenomenal job over the years. They've been here for a long time and built out those relationships. Um, we've had hygiene kits donated, we've had cash donations, not large ones, but small ones. Um, there's been a number of those. As it relates to the shelter, I'm not a hundred percent sure. You'd have to ask Mercy House sort of what the volunteer engagement opportunities would be there. I don't know the answer to that question. But I know that there's a healthy, particularly faith-based community engagement here. I know many people who go to many houses of worship here in the city specifically, that I'm related to, actually, in a number of cases. And so I know there's lots of opportunities to get involved, and so, um, but I'm not sure in terms of the specifics. I mean, it's been positive, sort of the activities that would cause sort of an enabling of homeless. We haven't bumped into as much as we've seen in other places. For example, pizza drop-offs, those kinds of things, we have not seen that. And when we do see those, we, we say, thanks for helping. And, and if, as we see another opportunity, can we introduce you to Mercy House? And maybe you could serve one of the meals there. That's kind of our MO, but we have not had significant interventions such as that here locally.
So when, if we were to extend your contract, I would expect that you'd be, it'd be an annual contract, another twelve months, correct?
Correct.
And you're looking for the pricing to be similar to, or greater than?
Well, let me clarify. So the, the contract auto-renews, and the council would have to take, initiate positive action to terminate the agreement with a specific notice period, which are thirty days or whatever it is on that. So if the, if, if it's council's desire to, uh, let the contract go forward, then no action is required tonight.
Okay. So seeing what you've presented for the past twelve months, and what you're proposing to do is do the census in September, or I mean, in the summer, that's part of the program, keep that going. And you've developed a relationship with law enforcement whereby you have the opportunity... You have the opportunity to partner with the deputies in such a way that you can get. Those that need the service placed.
Correct.
And has it, have you noticed, have you had good. Response in terms of them wanting to continue the use of this shelter? Or you mentioned that the, the virus is an issue, but maybe not so much here, or have you monitored that at all?
We, we are monitoring that, so obviously, if we do a street exit, we're monitoring that to make sure that we don't bump up back up to them on Lakewood Boulevard or something like that, I mean, that is sort of what we're paying attention, we've not seen that yet, I mean, it's been. A month and two days. Essentially, since that shelter started taking intakes. We have not seen that to be a problem yet, and again, as I said earlier, I think the bed count percentage there, I know they've reduced their numbers, again, you'd have to refer to Mercy House, but I think that's a significant step. And I think once people see that. And once they go there, I think, and they see the quality of the facility, I think they would. Fight for what. They would have, so I would hope that they would stay.
Now, if you were to engage someone on the street, one of your helpers. And determine that they do not want to utilize the shelter. And there's other options to go into another area or just, you know. Is that included in your data as well, as to if you engage them and they do not take what's offered? How does that go beyond that?
Yeah, we, every interaction is not only to the degree that we're able to either bike because we know them and we have talked to and know most of the homeless neighbors that live on the streets here in Bellflower. So if we don't know them and we, we log interactions in terms of who we talk to and what services are offered, one hundred percent of the time. So in our database, we know who's been offered the shelter, how many times they've been offered the shelter, that's just sort of normal protocol for us. Whether they've taken up us on a particular item or not, we don't track necessarily that. They didn't take these two options, because it's sort of a dance usually to figure out what exactly is going to be the, the key that opens the lock to their next step. But we do log all that interaction.
At one point, and I, correct me if I'm wrong. Those that work in the, responsible to you. Are actually folks that have been on the street and have been turned around, is that still the case?
Not a hundred percent, but we, we have quite a few individuals that have, as part of their journey, have, have experienced homelessness. We, we are proud to say that many of those folks come through and they frankly are some of our best case managers. Kind of how the, how the sausage is made, if you will, is that depending on any given day, we sort of have dedicated folks that are here, we give you those contact informations of our staff, but we. Depending on the circumstance, if for whatever reason. They don't like six-foot-seven tall, good-looking white guys. You know, then maybe somebody whose first language is actually Spanish might be a better person to sort of engage, so we might be bringing out and at times have brought out others. And often, some of those have lived experience that is a game changer. I've never been homeless myself, but having somebody that has been is a game changer, because they can kind of, kind of get through some things. We do have a lot of those and that's, a number of them have come out here for sure.
So looking forward to the next year. Two goals that have been established is that you're gonna, would do another census in the summer.
Yep.
And that you're gonna fill those other eight beds. And. Is there anything else that would be on your radar?
Yeah, we'd want to monitor, we'd want to monitor the individuals on the streets, so part of the census is not just to get a number, it's actually to see who's still out there, who hasn't taken the shelter, some of the questions that we would work again with city staff, law enforcement, potentially in terms of what we would ask. Would be highly relevant to the survey. Again, local contextual questions and I haven't written this yet, or our team hasn't written this, but things such as. You knew that there was a shelter that was being made available, what, what would prevent, what prevented you from being there, please explain, there would be a number of things that, that would be really rich data to gather. Just to get a pulse of sort of, you know, the city has gone out of their way or done a lot to sort of provide an opportunity, what prevented you from doing that? Things like that would be dialed in, so it's not just, we're gonna go talk to people, it's actually a dialed-in survey. The other thing that a census does is a little bit more comprehensive, when our teams come to town, they do drive around, they are going to sort of hotspots, if you will, but they aren't sort of blanketing the city, going everywhere. In a particular day, they may be setting up a couple of appointments. And then they're driving a census will allow us to kind of go back into every nook and cranny, I don't know if you saw it on there, but we did sort of what, it's called a heat map, where you drop locations just to see where pockets. Are in the city, that again would be interesting. To see if maybe there's certain areas that. Homeless population has dropped down and others, maybe, maybe it continues to increase, because I know there's a couple of locations in particular. Here in the city that are a little bit more challenging.
When we initially had discussions, you mentioned that in some of the cities that you service. You'd actually seen a reduction in the number of calls for service for the law enforcement.
Correct.
How long does that ordinarily take for you to recognize that diminished amount?
It's a good question, I, we, I do not have any sheriff data. On any of those numbers.
But Anaheim, for instance, I think you cited as an example, was like ten or twelve percent after you had worked their streets a year or two, is it, that's.
Yeah, they changed their system on sort of how do they count and measure? And so how do they track based on calls coming in, and we, it still is to this day, actually, in a, in a state that now went from twenty-four percent of the homeless population in the US to now twenty-seven. Based on the point-in-time count, so it's growing here in the city, in the county, in the state. But in a county and a state where it's growing, we actually see when you have an effective strategy and, and a. Alignment of resources that allow people to get into the system of care, you do see the numbers and their numbers have significantly decreased, I don't know them off the top of my head. But it was in the nine hundreds when we originally started and we're now. Right around the five hundred to six hundred number of street-level homeless, now they've done a lot of work. It's not just city net, but there's been a lot of work that's been going on, and so you do see. When you implement best, and I think that's what you guys are gonna see, you're gonna get busy when all the other cities and the counties start calling and saying, what else are you doing? The only other curveball I'd say is I know there's some recent conversations about motel rooms getting opened up and thousands of motel rooms, and I haven't quite got my head around what that might mean for Bellflower. Specifically, if that's just LA County, LA City, I, I saw it over the weekend, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I think that's all the questions I have, I appreciate what you've done for us in the past year.
Thanks.
Thanks for answering all the questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, Councilmember Raymond Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Brad, how you doing? First off, thank you for coming and again, thank you for your service this past year, six, seven, because you're talking above the.
Six, seven, I am above the.
Plexiglas. So. You had mentioned the eight bed left there, so, and maybe that's, I'm gonna look to staff, so. We were still at the, what, forty-one? Bed availability from the start because of COVID? I don't know if Brad, Brad would know that, so maybe Randy or Jeff. I, I thought the number we were told, forty-one, what they reduced from fifty down to forty-one, or are we back to having fifty available?
No, it's.
No, we're not, we're not at fifty.
There's not a set number at this time.
Yeah, we, the operating number we work with is forty-three.
Forty-three, is that what it was?
And then he said today, he said there were seven beds empty. Eight beds, eight beds empty, which would lead us, I mean, I haven't seen the number for today, but if that's true, then we have thirty-five in there, which is great.
Yeah, oh yeah.
That'd be our high water mark.
Well, that's the point I was getting to, so we're getting up there, so.
Correct.
Thirty-five is the number that I heard as of this, as of today.
And if you look at, if you look at like Santa Ana's numbers, for example, that's an astounding good number, so. I mean, even at thirty-five, I would consider that a victory at this point in time of the shelter, so.
Yeah, yeah. Brad. When you first came forward and. Last year with Matt and, you know, and then we were, we had a, probably a slew of questions then too. Because that was the beginning of it, and I think part of it was that you would outreach to every church in town so that you'd have a connection, so that. That, you know, you'd have that resource so that if someone comes showing up at a church, then, you know, they can get to you guys and then. Hopefully, it all piece together, and you've, you've, can you say that you've, you know, successfully. Have a contact at every church so that, that you're.
No. What we, what, the way we sort of, so we partnered with Kingdom Causes Bellflower, who facilitates a number of meetings of local clergy. We've sort of leaned on them as we've sort of, you know, it was sort of an interesting beginning process with Kingdom Causes Bellflower, they're all friends of ours. But to kind of find those lanes, their lane is that lane, and so we sort of picked up a lot of the outreach work, let them kind of double down on housing and different things and. Join them and support them in faith-based connections, so that's what we've done. Is essentially worked with Kingdom Causes Bellflower, who has the pulse. We have had lots of times where, for example, we in our outreach efforts throughout the week would go to locations where things are being served or. Resources are being offered and we would go partner with those organizations, that's happened. A number of times, I don't have a list of the number of. I'm sure we could get that if that's something that you'd like to know, sort of what organizations we've worked with.
I just thought that, you know, I, I mean, to make it a, you know, a successful campaign out there. I think everybody, if everybody knows what's available and, and they can, they can connect networks.
Shout out to Kingdom Causes Bellflower, they, they really do have a handle on that, I mean, that would be my suspicion early on and it is true, they.
If you recall, I'm on the board of directors there, so, yeah.
Trying not to say that.
Yeah, I can just say that, I'm, I'm, I'm a volunteer, and so, I'm sorry. Yeah, volunteer. Brad, I know it's on your chart, you know, May was a busy month, I think a hundred and twenty-six outreach contacts. Are you on track for that number in June, is, do you see a, a decline now or?
It's, it's a good, it's an interesting number because the number does represent duplications, right, so one could be, we could be spending three hours with an individual and we could then talk to that same individual every day. And that does happen where that one person could generate six outreach contacts in a week. So it's sort of a fuzzy number in the sense that it's, what was that? Three, six times is too many, only three, so that, those, I would suspect that those are going up just because we are. Seeing a lot more people, have a lot more interactions, I know that some of the transports that we've been doing. Sometimes can get pretty involved. Because part of it is sort of working with an individual to sort of consolidate their belongings, to eliminate what they don't need to take to the shelter, and that takes a minute sometimes. Before we put them into our van and then we transport them to the shelter. So it depends on how many outreach contacts, but I would suspect the number's gonna go up. I don't know what that number is, I was, I kind of look at the, the bottom line on the right-hand side, but I'm not sure.
So now, would you say there's a, there's this trend that you see a lot of. New faces, first timers in Bellflower that, that you've contacted and then. Is that, that's still just ongoing?
One hundred percent of the time, we see new faces in every city in Southern California, it's just true.
So percentage-wise?
I, I don't have that, I could, we could break that down in terms of sort of.
Well, what percentage do you know on a carryout, at any given time?
But when we do censuses, where we sort of look year after year. Or we do sort of a deep dive on, on analysis of any given month, that's kind of how we chop our data up, is in a month, it's, could be anywhere from twenty to forty percent new names. That speaks to a lot of issues, it's not necessarily, it, it speaks that. The hidden homeless, for example, there's a lot of people that live in vehicles, or there's a lot of people at the end of months sort of run out of money and then they end up in their vehicle. Or they're living in motels. We also currently operate a number of quarantine facilities around counties nearby where we're actually sort of the provider that provides twenty-four-hour. Staff and we are quarantined individuals at risk for COVID. And in those facilities, there are people that live there. Who are not necessarily our clients, so you also have a large population that are living in motels. Which are sort of the de facto shelters in LA County.
Are you in the riverbed besides being in the city?
Uh, here?
Yeah, and then, in the Los Angeles Riverbed, you're not in there at all?
I mean, unless there's individuals that we recognize that are going over there, we aren't doing any patrols in, other than the footprint of Bellflower. So unfortunate reality, that's why I always sort of look at reality numbers, you know, these are point-in-time count numbers, they're always low, as you saw with our number. We have huge challenges in California.
When you go out. Does a, a staff from the Department of Mental Health ever go with you?
Yeah, we have. From, from early on, we have been supported by all different departments, agencies, mental health. Law enforcement, lots of different outreach organizations, we have, that has been, there's a lot, there's limited resource, but there's a lot of coordination, surprisingly. So yes.
Okay, thank you, Brad, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Brad, thanks for coming out and giving us your time tonight, I really appreciate it. When you go out with the Sheriff Department, and I know it's a lot of gearing up since we got the homeless shelter going or whatever. Their quality of service or, or what you see they're doing and working with you. Is it similar to the Orange County Sheriff that you've been accustomed to in the past, or is it, is there a learning curve still coming on?
Yeah, I know there's learning curve, I mean, when we started, so just as, you know, their, their availability was a challenge, because it's just beginning to shift as they've sort of been on long details, dealing with COVID and, and uprest. Or unrest, and some of the challenges that we're having important, important conversations on the streets, they've been dealing with that right as we opened the shelter. So there was sort of a challenge of trying to get access to law enforcement. That was available, that just didn't do a long shift. So initially, the first couple of weeks were a little rocky, honestly, just because we were trying to make ourselves available when the windows that they were, which we did. But it has been much better since then, again, we, is it different, they're all different. You know, you don't have dedicated officers who do nothing but interact with neighbors experiencing homelessness, that would be different. But the people we've had and we've been, particularly of late, we've been asking lots of questions of our teams and. It's been more than sufficient. To do what we needed to do.
We do have dedicated CSOs.
Yeah.
That are, that's, are you talking?
I'm talking about sworn sheriff.
We have the CS, the SAOs that we have, have been assisting in the local emergency.
Because they know where all the nooks and crannies also are, and then the names and nicknames and.
Since last Wednesday, they've been on this pretty much full-time and I think doing pretty well.
But you see it coming along to, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming that Orange County's probably got it down, it's, it's a policy and what they do and.
Yeah, you guys are ahead of the curve.
You're not seeing any pushback. From the Sheriff Department, I guess is my really question.
Not at all.
Good, good. Mental health services, there's never enough, I'm assuming, and, and. When mental health comes out to a site, is it, is it, is it an evaluation and then they walk away, or is it an evaluation and they say, we gotta do something or?
Hundred percent depends on the context and the circumstance, sometimes it's referring and us encouraging them to come out and coordinating their, sort of calling them in and saying, we need your help over here, can you please join us? So they are very focused. And everywhere in between, sometimes it's a check-in, a lot of that, we do, particularly here, we do not have ment, we're not trained in mental health.
Right, I get that. You call the mental health in, is this when you say we need something and there's, there's. Several examples of long-term mental health people at certain locations in our town. And I guess what I'm asking, if, does it take mental health to come out to that. Location and that one person more than once to, before something's done?
Oftentimes, yes. Yes, that's true.
And then what Dan alluded, and when he was talking, and it wasn't clear, but the faith-based organizations. And I remember when Dan and I met with you early on, you mentioned one thing about some of the. The do-gooders at these faith-based, you know, they're doing sometimes some more harm and good, or they're making themselves feel good and not helping any of the, the homeless. And on your early onset of, of doing that, I noticed you, you said Kingdom Causes is the conduit to those. But has the faith-based organizations been cataloged in a way and schooled in what not to do or? To, to try to help the problem instead of hinder it?
Yeah, this would be, the, the, the person who, our team that comes out here would have really good specific answers, because they would know what else on Tuesday's a good idea and Wednesday and Thursday, I don't have that level of detail, but. The reality is, is sort of, sort of my, again, my stump speech on those kind of things, we've had nothing but embrace from faith communities that have been here, they all sort of are leaning in, everyone wants to make a difference, particularly when you see it on the streets. The challenge is, is that sort of the chronic homeless, the individuals that might be experiencing mental. Health concerns or challenges, those are sort of difficult to often deal with, and it takes, even for an organization like ours, we have to call in people who are trained mental health specialists. The reality is, is that, so yes, on one hand, we want to say, look at. Frozen turkeys and toys and food giveaways are not the answer to ending homelessness, however, part of the reality though is. Some of those families that may or may not be homeless, living on Lakewood Boulevard. Are those individuals that I was describing earlier who do access those resources and who do experience real food insecurity. Who do go to access those food banks, so I would not say necessarily that we should shut down all sort of resource provision. But sort of disconnecting that, there's sort of street-level HUD-defined homeless and then there's sort of. McKinney-Vento students and people that are sort of living on the margins, those. Should take advantage of those resources where there's literally one paycheck away, and I know a lot of the faith communities do reach out to that. A lot of them will refer to us as well, so they know how to get ahold of us, our number is pretty much out there, everyone sort of knows how to get ahold of us, we have a generic outreach number and our case managers give direct cell phone numbers to all the individuals we work. We have a generic outreach number and our case managers give direct cell phone numbers to all the individuals we work with so they can call us directly. That's a pretty well-oiled system. It took a month or so to get there, but there, there's good resources here in Bellflower for people that are experiencing homelessness because our preference, as I'm sure is your preference, is that if people are, are gonna become or at the risk of homeless, they should tap into these resources so then we don't have to.
You explained it very well to me. Thank you. It's, it's, you know, when you said the one paycheck away and those people, I, I wasn't thinking about them, but you're right.
Yeah, they, they are the ones that if you were to go to any food giveaway, and I, I'm not even refer to something specific. If you were to go to most of those locations, you would see that they are those kind of families and individuals that are there. They aren't necessarily the chronic individual that's sleeping on a bus bench.
Thank you, Brad. That's all I got.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Sany Santez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Brad, thank you again for coming to this meeting and making your presentation. I, I just want to get a kind of a clear picture in terms of our situation if somebody between you and our city manager can explain to me what's going on in terms of engaging the homeless. So because we have different players, we have you, we have Kingdom Causes, we have our CSOs, we have the sheriff. So what does each of this group play their role in in terms of engaging the homeless? So if you can break it down.
Yeah, let me start. So we had a meeting, there, there was a disconnect frankly, and we had a meeting of all hands last Monday, Monday before last Monday. Seems time flies. And we kind of had a, a distribution of duties, who was gonna do what, when, where. And to get kind of a, a resolution on what the goal was. And what we made clear to everybody in the room is that we're not really there to provide services here. We've done that. We provided the shelter. So what we're at is giving the homeless that are still in the community, not taking advantage of the shelter, their options, which as we all know are to go to the shelter, go elsewhere, or go to jail. And I think what's happened since then is that the message has gotten clear and the interaction has become more clear with the homeless. And I've, I've witnessed it with the deputies. I know he's had the same situation with the homeless here. So I think we are now starting to see a reduction of the homeless that are making use of the streets for their campground and the other, the other activities that they do there. And I think that's a welcome thing for the public. So the answer here, it's a well-brought question because before last week, I think it was in disarray. We didn't, we really weren't a hundred percent certain what the mission was, but I think that's already clear now and Brad could add to that if he needs to.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're crystal clear that now is to fill the shelter. I mean, that's been a long time coming. We've been talking about it for a long time. The goal is to offer that to everybody and clear. We, we are part of sort of multi-collaborations to tap into county resources. So we are part of all those meetings. And in particular for cases here in Bellflower, there's case conferencing. So on a weekly basis, we're talking about cases together. Now Mercy House is relatively new and again, we're focused on filling their shelter and supporting them and getting the people into there that are gonna stay and support them in that. But that will continue. The goal is that we're talking together so that they aren't sort of going to one organization, then the next, then the next. We're gonna all still be together. We've been doing that all along. And we'll keep doing that now with the, sort of the shelter as the nexus of the hub of resource.
Mr. Santez, the, the judge Carter was here last week, meeting with a, a group of city managers and councilmembers from surrounding cities and reiterated the same point was that these anti-camping and the anti-nuance laws that we have in effect are good laws, his quote, not mine, are good laws and should be enforced. And, you know, given how aggressively we're going after it, he just kind of looked at me and said, I would expect no less. So I think the message is loud and clear that we're gonna do that and we're gonna go forward with that.
Okay, so, so let's say, let's give a, a, take a, a typical example. Let's say, say the, a resident finds a, a small camp on a public park. So who, who should be contacted about this homeless individual? Is it CityNet?
Anybody and everybody, but for lack of a, it's, since they're a contract agent to us and we can find them at any time, that should go directly to the Public Safety Office or, or City Hall and do that immediately. If it's a weekend, call the station.
Okay.
The deputies are clear on what they need to do and they know how to engage these folks and the others necessary for the services there.
All right, very good. That's good. Okay. Brad, you mentioned that you have two full-time staff dedicated to Bellflower. Is that true?
So we have staff that their primary assignment is Bellflower. They don't, they're not just, so our eighty hours are primarily those two individuals.
Eighty hours a week?
Eighty hours a week.
Uh, okay.
But it's, it's packed in with other people. So my hours tonight are counted in our eighty. But it is two people who are here, they're at least physically here. Now, sometimes they may come, meet somebody here and then we take them to LA, that's happened. And we spend the entire day in LA. So just like law enforcement, sometimes the actions pull us out of the city and we're not like here driving up and down the streets. But we communicate that to Joel and the team. We communicate that to Sheriff. Everyone sort of knows where we're at or when we're gonna be around. Kind of how it plays out. Lately, it has been, again, because we're not setting up appointments, we are out there doing education and saying, can we come to the shelter? If not today, how about we come back tomorrow? If not then, how about we come back the next day? It's been four days of focused outreach. Four days of focused outreach lately. Thank you. I can't see through all the reflections on these screens. I can't see your face.
All right, so I hope it happens that we fill the additional eight more beds. So, but once it happens, what's gonna happen to CityNet, to our shelter?
That's a great problem to have. Let's hope it does.
I'm, I'm sure because there are still homeless out there.
Yeah.
We can drive around, so I don't think it would be a difficult problem to solve.
Yeah, no, I, and, and, and I think what will happen is you'll see a flow of people through the shelter in, in of itself. And I think there'll be very few snapshots in time when all the builds affect, all the beds are filled on any given day. But we'll still continue to enforce the, the anti-camping, anti-nuance ordinances that we have.
Hmm, okay. And then since the renewal of the contract is for another year, right?
The contract automatically renews unless you take action to not renew it.
So let's say, I wishful thinking here, Brad, let's say six months from now, homeless are gone.
Great.
I hope it happens.
I'll go to Norwalk. We fire them, we fire them on the spot. No, no.
Is, is the contract kind of tied to a full year or can it be?
No, we, there's a notice period.
Okay, all right. Because I, I, I'm hoping that it happens because I think right now with the trend that I'm seeing, because last week I was at the shelter, we had twenty-nine. If you're telling me we have additional six since Wednesday, that's good news.
I think, I think Brad hopes that happens as well because that'd be the best commercial he could possibly have.
Right, exactly. So I, I'm, I'm not a betting person. I would say within two weeks, the forty-three beds will be filled.
There, there's no doubt. I know it's a huge investment for cities. I know those are tough decisions, particularly in seasons like this when budgets are, who knows, getting slashed everywhere. I, I can't imagine. And there's no doubt that, that direct investment into resources just, it's just sort of Public Safety 101, Community Engagement 101 now that, and there will bear fruit. And you're seeing it.
Yeah.
Literally.
As other cities build their shelters, there'll be less impact because there'll be more squash and spread, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much again.
Yeah, pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santez. I, I, I really hope that what Councilmember Santez said that occurs right, that we reach a point where we don't need this. I, I, I just hate being a pessimist, but I just, the reality, I think with, with COVID and a lot of factors is that we're probably gonna have people in our community that are continuously gonna be, become homeless, right?
Can I give you a term that, that's sort of, it's not my term, but it's a term that I think if, if there was a lens to sort of paint that picture, it's the term functional zero.
Yeah.
I know it gets thrown out quite a bit, but the idea of functional zero is that when you have a, a place such as New Hope and you've got a strategy such as we have collectively here, that homelessness is, you approach a functional zero. That would be the goal. Because ultimately, there's gonna be challenges and there's domestic violence and all these things that cause homelessness in some cases. But it's, that homelessness is rare, brief and non-reoccurring. That's the end game. Is that it's rare, meaning it's happening less and less and less, even in, even though around us may be gaining more. It's brief, so that when we talk to somebody, we, we have intervention strategies before they become chronic. Once they become chronic, meaning they've got a health diagnosis and they're out for more than a year, it makes my job ten times harder. And it's non-reoccurring, meaning that the, whatever unsettling happened, it actually changes to be settled. That would be the end game. And that will mean that there's gonna be more and more keep on coming, but it's functional zero.
Absolutely. So just, just sharing that as, as a word of caution, right, as we kind of move forward. I still remember the day that we met you here. What was that, like a year and three months ago, I think, or something like that? And I remember sharing with you as we were, back then, it was early in the stages and we're talking about the possibility of ever building a shelter in New Hope. And I remember me asking you that question, that we provided that resource, how effective would it have been? And so I'm, I'm happy that it's grown, borne fruit, right?
Exactly.
And the numbers don't lie. It's there. Despite COVID and despite the civil unrest that we've had recently, right, the fact that we still have people going in. So I just really want to commend you and, and the whole team from Kingdom Causes and our Public Safety Team and just a tremendous, tremendous effort. I think as I've gone around and I'm driving around, plus like Councilmember Santez said, you know, as we see, start seeing the numbers increase in New Hope, you know, it's, that's good. I mean, it's sad that we have more people in there, but it's also good in the sense that that's what we invested in as a, as a community. So I'm happy that they're there and not on the street.
Correct.
Just food for thought in terms of the, I know there's a marketing and a sell that has to be made with, with our homeless neighbors to diminish the, or address their fear of COVID, right? And, and I know that our city manager has led the way recently of, of obtaining a pod to be able to isolate any COVID-positive, you know, neighbors that if they become that, that are able to be isolated. So, and I think we're gonna get a couple more, Mr. Stewart? Right? So, so that's on its way. So in case if that helps you and your staff, hopefully to convince some people that they'll come in, that, that'll be a resource that's there. The, the things that I have questions on are, one is regarding the new census that's coming up. I'm really interested on what we get from that number. I'm very much a comparative guy and I, I, I think the questions that you asked last time were really on point. I think they were really informative. I have no problem with asking you questions. I think they're relevant as well considering the change since, that we've encountered since then. But I'm really interested to see if we can get those questions asked again so we could see the trend lines, right?
In the, in the census that you did get, the entire list of questions is there. We don't want to add too many questions, but we might tweak and or add maybe one or two that are specific to the shelter and developments of late, just to sort of get a pulse of what's going on there.
Absolutely. The, the, the last two things that I have, one is regarding, do you, do you distinguish between homeless neighbors that are in a public space versus homeless neighbors that are in a private bar zone?
No, I mean, no.
Okay.
No, I mean, there are, there are sort of potential ramifications for those individuals, but from our standpoint, doesn't matter.
Okay. And I'm asking that because I, that's of interest to me in terms of is there like a migration towards different spaces to get away from potential enforcement activities? And so that's something that I'm, I'd be curious, not that I'm asking you to track that, but I, I'm curious to see if that.
I'm curious as well.
Yeah, because I think there's, there are potential enforcement mechanisms that we are not undertaking as a city that I think we can to educate our private property owners of their responsibilities as well. When it comes to people that are in their properties and if they tolerate them continuing to be there. Obviously, that's not part of the greater good for the community and I think they, I'd expect them to be good neighbors and do the right thing, so.
Completely agree.
Again, that's something that I'm curious about. And then the last thing I have is with regard to the severely mentally ill, and I know that was asked before. But I'm also curious to see on the census, I know there's privacy issues with regards to information, like me on a personal level, I don't need to know names. But I'm really curious to see, like if, then if a trend on numbers went down, like I don't know, there's a comparative from the first census as to how many we had severely mentally in the first census and, and this one and to see how that, if it's stable or if it went up or down, I, I'm curious.
We'll get, some of our questions will get at that number. Again, we're not clinicians in the sense that we're doing assessments out in the field, but we do ask a lot of questions that are relevant to that. My suspicion would be as the numbers decrease of the street population, you're gonna have a increase of individuals on the streets percentage wa, percentage-wise that are dealing with severe challenges.
I would expect that too. And so I'm curious to see if, if your stats will show that. And if it's, if so, like it's not a reflection of failure, it's just the reality that these numbers are gonna go up and that's, okay, that's what we need to know.
Our team and, and any good outreach, homeless engagement, those are the ones we really, we don't, we, it pains us to see individuals living in the ways they have to.
Just one last question for you. Do you validate the, or attempt to validate the county's numbers on the counts that they do, or you just accept those as gospel?
We count them as an important number that is done through methodology that gets that number.
So my view is, when you came up with a hundred and thirty-two two years ago for the data here, is that your number? Is that the number came to you, given to you by the county?
That's the number given by the county.
So if we come up a year from today and we look for a snapshot today, you'll have a number that's better wrought because you have a better feel for what the number is?
Yeah, I mean, it's a combination. So when we do our census, it's a, it's a, it's a binary. We go out and, and we kind of do, it's more robust process and we bring out staff that do this all day, every day.
I think there's overlap too. I mean, like there'll be people that, that Paramount Bellflower, whoever, you know, that they're staying in both places and.
For sure. And on the given day, we go out and, and that's where the, everything is just a point in time snapshot. It's not like we build walls around our cities.
So what is the, last, last question for you? So what would be the measure of progress?
Uh, number of individuals, street exits is always our thing. So obviously, once the shelter's full, we have to continue to get created. But as you saw, not all our exits go into temporary situations. We had one already this month that was a permanent relocation. That happened to be a family reunification. Great story, great connection.
I was there for the beginning of that. I remember that, yeah.
So there's, those things will continue to happen. So again, I would expect to see from a management strategy, I would expect to see the numbers on the streets, both actually and anecdotally, I think the experience will be different in the city.
I mean, I know from the, the selfish perspective that we have and a lot of the residents have, I know certainly I do. It's gonna be the absence of people on the street that are indicative of homelessness in a community and for more, the more pejorative aspects of it. I'm not sure that's real. So I don't know what success looks like on this. So, and I know everybody can play games with the data about exits from the street and the whole nine yards. But if it still looks bad, that's not really a success. So I'm, I'm just curious what success looks like. And I don't, maybe we don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, I, I, I mean, anything that we can measure, I would, calls for service from law enforcement, like we don't get access to that data, but that's, and that's, it's, it's relevant. Calls for service related into the City Hall. I mean, all that sort of stuff, you would expect to see those go down. Even if it's diversions and there's less calls going to routing public safety officers and they come to us directly, I would think that would lower, as we've seen everywhere else we work, that they know how to get ahold of us. They, they don't have to go through Public Safety on and on and on. But again, we count street exits. I would hope to see recidivism, not out of the shelter. We'll stay connected with them. We don't just drop them off at Mercy House and say, good luck. They have our cell phone numbers and we will work with them and do anything we can. And we work with loss all the time, so.
So just the last thing on this severely mentally ill, I, I wasn't done before. So we're, just like we gave you resources now, that's one thing that the city manager and I are gonna, attempting to do now with this severely mentally ill, so. The good thing is that we've, and I spoke with the judge just last night about this, and so he's, he's offered, he said, if you need help, just let me know. And so we're hoping that we don't have to use that, wield that tool, but if need be, we're glad that it's there in the tool shed, just ready to go.
Yeah, we, we work with Judge Carter quite a bit in lots of places that he has jurisdiction over him and he's spot on.
Absolutely. So thank you so much for speaking. Gentlemen, any last questions, comments before?
Yeah. I would not have predicted that. That one was more surprising, if I'm being completely honest. I, I imagine you could nurture the relationship with Judge Carter and you guys were well ahead of it in LA County. I remember the council's consensus was, we want to be ahead of the curve and we want to lead the way on this. First one in LA County, yeah. I did not expect you to, you know, swallow hard and get a shelter open. That's, that's a bold move. And it's, it's an investment of resource. That, if I'm honest, as I'm standing here a year later, I was not expecting that. But good job. I mean, that is, every, every city's gonna need a version of that in California. Welcome to the new normal. Yeah. That's exactly what he thinks.
Hey, all the efforts you've done in the last year, and it was just like all the personalities came together in this last year with him reaching out, Juan being the League of Cities President and has authority beyond that, just of Mayor Bellflower and he, the judge trusts us and we trust him and it seems to have worked out. And, and we're grateful for your being an intercessory because when, your name is well-regarded in his chambers, so.
Yeah, we're happy to work with him anywhere. We're a big fan of, he's a catalyst for change. And he's an advocate for those that are on the streets as we all are, right? And we don't want anyone on the streets, that's what we all agree on. So, yeah, he's good.
All right.
Thank you.
And I think Wager, Wager's coming next, right?
We'll see.
Oh, it's coming. They, they already approved their shelters, so.
Yep, that is true, actually, yep.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
See you soon.
All right, great report. All right, item number 10 is next, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is a time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on an agenda, it must utilize one of the methods listed on page two of the agenda. You will be given three minutes to address the city council. Attempts to provide comment at times not designated on the agenda may result in the city dropping you from the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Let me announce this first. If you would like to speak, please use a raise hand feature under the participants tab. Or if by telephone, please press star nine to raise your hand. You will be called upon by the deputy city clerk in the order received. Your microphone will be then unmuted so that you can provide your comments. Okay, so with that, Madam Deputy City Clerk, I know it takes some time to load things up, but whenever you have your first member of the public wishing to make comments, we are ready.
Okay, yes, mayor, I'll give them just a moment to utilize that feature. Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone from the public wishing to present comment.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, so item 11A, as I mentioned early in the meeting, we are taking that item out of order. We will consider that at the end of the meeting. So let's skip over that and move on to item 12A, Mr. Stewart.
This is consideration of possible action to adopt urgency ordinance number 1392, an uncodified urgency ordinance implementing the Bellflower Business Recovery Program and causing the city council to act as the Bellflower Planning Agency in accordance, Bellflower Municipal Code 2.32.050, and read by title only, wait further reading and introduce ordinance number 1393, an uncodified ordinance implementing the Bellflower Business Recovery Program and causing the city council to act as Bellflower Planning Agency in accordance with the aforementioned Bellflower Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mrs. Stewart. I believe we have a staff report from, from this. Oh, okay, great. So we will come back to public comments?
Karen, is there a member of the public that wishes to speak?
Yes, I apologize. Mr. Sanchez would like to present public comments. So, Mr. Sanchez, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer on the screen and then you can begin. Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and honorable council members, staff and fellow Bellflowerians. I just have a quick, short question this evening. With regards to the Fourth of July around the corner, a lot of our neighborhoods tend to plan block parties. Just want to know if permits will be allowed to close streets for this Fourth of July? Or will there still be some kind of a restriction due to COVID-19? That's all, thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Sanchez, Mr. Stewart, Mrs. Dover?
There's still our county's restrictions on block parties.
Elizabeth Corpus, are you online? I know you've been dealing with this.
Yes. Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the council. We did get quite a few inquiries regarding block parties. We did reach out to one of the county supervisor's office who was in contact with the Department of Public Health. The, the response that we got from them was that since gatherings are not permitted under the order, that block parties would then not be allowed. There was nothing formally written regarding that. It's basically based on the fact that gatherings are limited and they view block parties as gatherings. So that's where we stand as of right now.
Thank you so much for that, Ms. Corpus, Mrs. Stewart. And, Mr. Sanchez, for posing that question, I'm sure you're not the only one that, that had that one for our community. So thank you. Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have anybody else from the public wishing to make comments?
Anyone else at this time?
No, it's, okay, sorry, sorry. So, so that was it. Okay, so I believe that item 12A has already been read and I believe we're getting ready to have Ms. Corpus present the staff report.
I'm sorry, Beth, you want to carry on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And would the city clerk please share their screen with me? Okay, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. First and foremost, can you hear me and can you see my PowerPoint?
Yes and yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So tonight's item is related to the Bellflower Business Recovery Program. Just to provide some background regarding this, on March 13th, 2020, the city declared a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. On March 19th, 2020, the governor issued a statewide order directing all residents heed current public health state directives to stay at home. And then on March 19th, 2020, Los Angeles County Health Officer directed specified non-essential businesses to cease operation. These mandates have cumulated, accumulated, excuse me. These mandates have culminated in devastating impacts to national, state and local economies. To help assist the restart of the city's local economy, an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance are proposed to establish the Bellflower Business Recovery Program. The program regulations are intended to be implemented temporarily to accelerate city approvals and promote local businesses. The program consists of two parts. The first is related to land use and planning decisions. And the second relates to outdoor dining and retail sales permits, on both of which I will discuss in later slides. And then lastly, the city may wish to consider additional potential changes, which I'll also highlight in future slides. So the first part of the program is regarding land use and planning decisions. As some of you know, some projects require review by the Planning Commission before advancing to the city council. The BMC does allow the city council to act as the planning agency. So instead of projects going to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation to the city council, if the council chooses to act as the planning agencies, these projects would skip the Planning Commission and go directly to the approving body, which is the city council. Again, this would bypass the Planning Commission. And if approved, this reduces the time period for developers to obtain a final decision regarding proposed projects. Some examples of these type of projects are subdivisions and planned developments. So for example, the Planning Commission would review all subdivisions and make recommendations to the city council. That's one public hearing. And then the second public hearing would be in front of the city council. If the city council approves themselves to act as a planning agency, then it would simply bypass the Planning Commission and go directly to council. Other projects include site design review and the design review committee reviews. So just really quickly on design review committee reviews. Depending on the specific plan, these reviews either take place before or after the city council approval. This also adds additional time to the project application. The second part of the program is related to outdoor dining and retail sales permits. Because of the various COVID-19 related health orders, indoor dining and retail is limited throughout the city. This is a result of physical distancing requirements, limits on occupancy and personal protection equipment needs. With the Business Recovery Program, outdoor events would be allowed and would assist commercial establishments by increasing patronage to these businesses. Outdoor dining and retail sales would be allowed in the public right of ways, including sidewalks and parking lots. And these permits would be issued administratively. So if you can see the picture that's in the slide, this does show, this is an example of outdoor dining within the right of way. As you can see, there is a clear path of travel for ADA access. This program would provide immediate relief to businesses within the city. The city council may also want to give direction regarding additional potential changes to the BMC related to the Business Recovery Program. Some of these changes to consider are administrative approvals or administrative use permits or alcohol licenses rather than requiring a full conditional use permit. Another change could be an administrative approval for alternative parking. This would be via a administrative use permit. It would be based upon parking, parking need study. The third potential change could be, again, to bypass the Planning Commission and directly seek city council consideration for zone changes and or development agreements. Both are adopted by ordinance. So if, because the city council is the only authority that can adopt these ordinances, it may make sense to have these type of projects go directly to the city council. The fourth item is to merge the function of the design review committees with the planning commission function, functions. This is to implement a one-stop permitting system. And then lastly, a consideration item is to adopt a development agreement zone layover, for short, the dazzle, to allow a development agreement to alter requirements of underlying zoning. Not all projects fit neatly within the BMC zoning requirements. There could be projects that do have the need to provide some flexibility for. And this could be negotiated through a development agreement. The development agreement would then implement changes through the underlying zoning, which would be through an overlay zone. All of these items mentioned above would save some time for the developer and helps expedite the project and to streamline the project. The above changes on this slide, they would all require a public hearing in order to implement. Staff is asking city council for direction on whether one or more of these items should be brought back to the city council at a later date for a public hearing. The recommendation this evening is to adopt the urgency ordinance by at least a four-fifths vote and this would take effect immediately. The second is read by title only, wait further reading and introduce ordinance number 1393. This ordinance would require a second reading and 30 days after that second reading would become effective. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this. That completes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that report, Ms. Corpus. Let's start off with questions from the council, Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very timely. Again, what's happening, this economy, again, other cities have opened up, again, their public areas. I doubt if, you know, some are even going to the extent of streets. So, but that's a whole different story. But looking at our public sidewalks and, and some other areas to be useful and to be maintained and to give a presence of activity is definitely a positive during this time. So from the standpoint of the additional temporary, temporary authorization of use of dining and other, and sidewalk sales kind of things with, with still controls, that's, I think that's a very positive. The, I did have a discussion with staff today about the second part as it pertains to the Planning Commission authority and, and actually had a conversation with two planning commissioners, if that's, that was fine. And they do understand. And I think it's, I think it's needed. You know, developers sometimes are hard to come by, at least quality ones that really want to move a project and, and or, you know, bring forth something that's of quality. And time is always, for decades, eons, time has always been somehow more valuable to, you know, developers than some of the other fees and so on. So if they could save a month, two months and more, definitely the, the process again becomes very positive. So. The. Again, I think staff has thought this out and it's, again, just to point out again, it's, it's, it's presented to us as a temporary. So we're on a sort of one-year trial basis. And. And Beth, from a standpoint of, you know, quantity of, of number of permits. And again, you know, I was driving down Bellflower and looking at, you know, what has potential. Again, some of the popouts are like obvious, but there are other tight, you know, sidewalks and there's a lot of obstructions and so on. So have you looked at any, any of the standards that you'll, you'll likely apply towards what, what could qualify under these? Or is it, I just can't see a blanket out there. I know it's gonna be like, you know, they have it, why can't I kind of thing? But have you looked at some of the standards, Beth, on, on, again, how you're gonna implement this?
Yes, so the way the ordinance is written, it does provide a lot of flexibility for a director's decision. Specifically regarding outdoor dining, it could be provided in a number of ways. It could be simply tables and chairs that are out in the right of way. And no matter what, they would still have to provide ADA access. So those tables would have to be up against the building and then ADA access provided to the side of it. Or in some cases, the right of way is wide enough where they could have outdoor dining immediately adjacent to the curb. And then the four-foot access and then the building. And so those are a couple of options for outdoor dining. Some, some may request outdoor furniture as well. So for example, they could request outdoor umbrellas. And some instances, you know, really nice planters, you know, movable planters to provide some type of ambiance. So that's really kind of what I envisioned for outdoor dining.
And with that. Beth, anything more on that? Beth, the, the second part of this is, is I know, I believe there'll be sort of an issuance of, of also encroachment. And that'll be covered with, with insurance.
Oh, that is correct. As part of the requirement would be a liability insurance because businesses are encroaching into the right of way. They would need to indemnify the city for the areas that they would be utilizing.
Okay, when you looked at curbside, I noticed there are some setups now. But, and they're in front of parking spaces, curbside parking. And, and it gets very close to the actual curb. And I don't know, some problems of, of opening car doors. So is, are you looking at a, some kind of clearance from the actual curb itself?
That is possible. That is something that's reasonable that we can implement if there's a passenger on the drive, in the car and they need to get out, they would need to be able to have their access for that. So yes, that would be a consideration.
All right. Okay, thank you, Beth. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you, Beth. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada, Councilmember Ray Dutton.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Corpus, you did a great job on the staff report and getting things in order. And getting it done in a timely manner. I'm all about efficiency from the private sector and anytime that we can move something along ahead of schedule. Just like my colleague Hamada was talking about is, is fast tracking some of this stuff for the developers or whatever, and that all boils down to saving money. I'm of the belief system that you can't get it right one hundred percent of the time. My belief system has always been if I can get nine out of ten decisions correct, I'm a winner. I don't think we need to, you know, dot every T or cross every I if we don't see them. If we see them, of course, that's just a figure of speech. But I think the way you have this written, I think you've covered everything and with the director's determination and direction and that this thing can be massaged a little bit. Works perfectly. And I don't have any questions, I just glad of what I'm seeing, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dutton, Mayor Protem Koops.
Turn my mic on, I gotta, I would, I agree with what was stated by Mr. Dutton. Learned a long time ago that these documents are living and breathing and we need to adjust to the situation. And we're in extraordinary situation now with the virus and the business closings and the business opening. And I love this document, it's innovative, it's shows that we have a heart for our community and for our business people. To give them a chance to get on their feet again. Some of this stuff may become permanent, but I think that in the next period of time, while we work with what we have. And try to encourage people to, the developers to come back and the business people to reopen and give them every opportunity to succeed. This document works well and I'm in total support of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Koops, Councilmember Sunny Santiness.
Thank you, Mayor. Beth, again, thank you so much for this presentation and I thank the city manager and all the staff for. Coming up with ideas to help our businesses, a good example of that was the small business assistance program and it's a continuation of that approach. To help them especially during these very difficult times. Beth, I just have a couple of questions for you. I'm assuming that. Since this ordinance does not, it doesn't permit outdoor dining in a street alley, so. So a typical application of this would be sidewalks, right? And I, I think Calaberra says a good example already, is that a good example? They have a couple of. Chairs and tables in the front, is that a, one typical example of this outdoor, temporary outdoor dining permit?
Essentially, yes, that is a key example of what outdoor dining in a sidewalk could do. I would mention that this is not only limited to sidewalks, it could be in public. Public places or city owned properties, so like public plazas, this could be applicable since that's the right of way. It could also be applicable to parking lots. So areas that need to expand because of the occupancy, occupancy limit. Could potentially utilize their parking lots to expand their dining areas.
Okay, so. So if a business establishment wants to use a public parking lot, for example, along the, behind the boulevard. What process will that business take to accomplish that?
Sure, they would have to submit the application obviously to the planning department and they would also need city approval to utilize that parking lot, which may or may not. Require city council review. But in a situation where it could require a shortage of parking. Then I could always make the determination that it needs a higher level of review, in which case it could be referred to the city council.
Okay, all right, thank you. Now, on continuing on that. One of the provisions here is states that the city may charge a rental fee for use of public places. Do you have some kind of rates in mind? How will this work?
I don't have those rates, I do know in our current fee schedule, there are certain fees. That are already established by resolution for utilizing public spaces. I don't have that in front of me, so I do apologize, I don't have those fees.
So, but you have some kind of fee structure already in mind?
I believe so, I know if you wanted to use some type of city property, we do have, that is outlined in the comprehensive fee schedule. I don't know about parking lots, that's the one, the one that I don't really know about, so I'm gonna have to take a look into that.
Okay, all right, so it's something that you can, you can look into. Now, in terms of your additional recommendation here for future consideration. Keeping in mind that all council members right now have been planning commissioners, right?
I thought we were gonna be again.
I know, so. So if, if we were to go along the lines of your recommendation. Well, first my question is, has there been any project that's been delayed because it has to go to a planning, to the planning commission?
It depends on what you see as a delay. So a lot of times the comments that we get, the feedback that we get from our applicants is that the project took too long in the process. And that might be because it required both planning commission and city council. So, I mean, overall, the timeline is a lot longer to go to planning commission and council as opposed to just going directly to the approval authority, which is council. So I, I want to say that, you know, applicants do express their frustration in terms of the timing of how long it takes. Maybe not necessarily delay because we do try to bring it through the process as quickly as we can.
It's not the, it's not the cumbersome aspect of the planning commission, it's the noticing requirements that throw us off culture all the time on these things.
Yeah, I, because I, I kind of remember the last few meetings of the planning commission, they were canceled. I think so, I'm just trying to kind of see the big picture here, if we were to basically get them out of business.
No, I don't think that's the intent at all, I mean, I don't think it's intending to get them out of business, we just had the opportunity, it was slow. Not many people coming into the counter, COVID nineteen, we took advantage of it and shut them down for a couple of months, but I think there's some pent up demand and they'll be back in business soon.
Is, is there anything else left for them if we were to take on these responsibilities? What's left for the planning commission?
Yeah, I mean, Beth, you might want to talk about some of the projects that would be left over for planning commission, be none of the urgency stuff, so almost everything outside of the downtown would be left over, right?
Like Zota or?
Lotlines or?
Something like that?
Oh, she's not there. Beth?
Did we lose her?
Oh, we lost her.
Uh-oh.
Okay, so what, I don't know if you heard the question, but the question came from councils, we're not trying to take the planning commission's job. And if we were to implement this recommendation, what would be left for the planning commission?
Well, they still do have quite a bit of conditional use permits that they review. So for example, for certain uses such as. In some areas of the city, let's just say trucking yards, that's a conditional use permit. And the final approval body is the planning commission, so they would still be reviewing that. The environmental documents, I'm sorry, like gas stations, those require CUP, they would still be reviewing that. The only thing that we would essentially bypass from the commission are those projects that. The planning commission acts as a recommending body to the council for. So in my previous slides, I think I mentioned subdivisions and site design reviews. Those wouldn't necessarily need to go to the planning commission anymore if the council acts as the planning.
Okay, I think with that, I'll go along with your recommendations, I think it will just expedite the process even more. All right, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. I. I do have some concerns. I, like Councilmember Dutton said, I'm all for streamlining and creativity. So, but I, I do have. I'll start off with that one with the planning commission, with the, with the first bullet point in page four. I like the, what's Councilmember Santiness said, I mean, there's, there's a reason we have a planning commission. And I think it's so that we, as a council, don't take on everything. It kind of, it, it helps us lighten up the workload. But at the same time, I, how do we balance that with a, a need for efficiency, so. And that's, that's an art, that's not a science, right? But I, I think there is a role for a planning commission and we start. We start kind of cannibalizing it, we're gonna have a, a body that's. We're basically absorbing everything. So I'm, I'm. That is in my thought process of, you know, is. Is, because it is, if I understand this correctly, this is permanent, right? Mrs. Corpus, the recommendation? Is for this, I think the. The, the points on, on page three, the outdoor dining, that, that was for a year. Where the sun set, but I think the. The bullet points, I started at the bottom of page three and go to page four, those are all, those would be permanent changes, correct?
That is correct, so this is for council consideration, now if you, we're looking for direction on these five bullet points. If it's something that you want to implement a change to the BMC on, then we would need to come back to the council for a public hearing to implement those changes.
Correct.
And that would be more of a permanent change because it will be as part of the BMC.
So then to clarify then, what we're considering, if, for some reason, we do give direction on these five. Added recommendations at the bottom of page three and page four, those would be brought back for us for actual full consideration and adoption at that point in time? Is that, am I reading correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm fine with that, I don't mind getting more in, in information for us to consider at, at. A point in the future, but I, I do, I just want to express that I do have. I'd like to see a little bit more and I'd like to see a breakdown exactly of what we would be actually. Adopting or taking on as a council if we adopt that bullet point. And to what would be left for the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I can just jump in. It is as Ms. Corpus indicated that what's before you tonight is only the two ordinances, one is the urgency and the other is the regular, they both say the same thing. And that's temporary, that's just for a year, those automatically set July first, twenty twenty-one. So the council could take action to implement those permanently during that year period, but that wasn't the, the intent. The intent was simply to jumpstart local economy in order to get us over this hump. The longer term things would come back for city council consideration in the form of an ordinance. Most of these require a public hearing, a notice public hearing in order to implement. So that was the intent and, and these were just spitballs that staff came up with and wanted council direction on in, in order to know whether or not to. Invest the time and energy to bring something back to the council or if it was simply something that the council didn't want to even think about.
Great, no, thank you for clarifying that, City Attorney. So I, I'm interested in seeing more. I, in terms of what's before us tonight for actual consideration and whether we approve or deny them. I don't have an issue with any of those, but since we are here considering these additional potential changes, I, you know, I'll share my comments, my initial comments. One is on the first bullet point regarding the alcohol licenses. I, I see the difference between the AUP and the CUP. I think my question would be whenever we consider this, if we consider this in the future would be. If, if you in your AUP role would be allowed to set conditions yourself. Cause there may be some situations that do merit conditions being placed upon a future alcohol license. But I don't know if you would be prevented from doing that. And if that would, if you would kick that up to the council or the planning commission for consideration if you think that they merit conditions. So that, that's just again, my comment on that. Regarding the second bullet point on the AUP with regards to the parking study, that, I don't have an issue with that. On the third, I think I already talked about my initial thoughts regarding the planning commission. And DAs and zone changes, on the fourth, on the merging, the potential merging of the functions of the DRC and the planning commission. Again, I, I get the expediency and, and the streamlining, I would just like to get a little more as to how that would work, I'm not sure if. These roles, the DRC role would be taken upon by the planning commission or if it's the reverse. You know, just some more clarity whenever it is that you bring that up before us, and then lastly regarding. The development agreement zone layover. Again, just a little more expansion next time on, in terms of. I'm not sure what altering requirements of the underlying zone means. But those are my comments, so again, thank you, Ms. Corpus, regarding what's before us, I, I don't have an issue. So with that, gentlemen, any, any further questions before we open it up for public comment? Mr. Santiness, Mr. Hamada? Mr. Dutton, Mr. Koops?
This would be a part of our, that it was a, a one year extraordinary time. Because I'm like you, I don't want to take away the responsibility and authority of the planning commission. From our point of view, we've got enough.
Well, so there's no recommendation to do so, those are items for consideration, if the council chooses not to go forward with the alternative items, don't do it. If you just want to go forward, it's in place today.
But I think Juan bought a good point, you know, we're, we have time limits on these things.
Right.
That we're not changing the whole face of the city and the government that exists here, we're merely trying to expedite potential processes. In the next, and I'd even be willing to go, let's do six months and then after six months look at it and say, do you want to go forward with this? There's different ways to look at this so that we're fair with everybody. But I've had planning commissioners say to me, why would I even want to be on the commission if you guys reverse everything I do? And this is something like that, why want, we're not gonna get quality commissioners if we take away the responsibilities and authority.
Yeah, I think, I think that, at least I, for me on a personal level, I, I learned a great deal from the planning commission and serving. In that planning commission, so that's where my thought process is, but again, well, we can cross that bridge whenever this is. Well, the way, the potential was that it could be forever, right?
I'm not prepared to make it any longer than a year or maybe even less.
Yeah, like a demo.
So the recommendation would be for the ordinance as written, the alternative items, don't take any action on today. And the item as written will expire July first, twenty twenty-one. As we go, and there's no further action required on that, after you approve the ordinance.
But I don't, I, I certainly, I'm not trying to convey the message that I would not want to explore these other recommendations, like I'm open to it. I think I just would want more information.
Well, we could do that, we can bring, so we could talk about that, I'm not gonna bring them back in, in Moss. So we'll bring them back, there's at least one item on that list that I would like you to see you consider, the rest don't matter so much to me, but yeah, we'll, we'll do that one, one bite at a time. And bring it back so it's easier to consider, I got you.
To Mr. Dutton's point, I think, you know, of, you know, there's, there's a value in expediencies.
No, you're gonna approve the ordinances written, the alternative items that were placed at the end for future consideration. Instead of making a recommendation that they all come back at a specific time, what I think I will do is that these six items that are there. Will bring them back individually or two at a time with additional information, so you can at least conjure and think about those things without the pressure of doing it all in one fell swoop. So, and then, and then we can make a more rational sign there, so, but the, I'll go back to the staff report. Beth, if you can bring it back.
The ones I was referring to, Councilmember Dutton, are the ones.
The five bullet points?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Those five bullet points, so those will not be included tonight unless you direct staff to bring them back at a future date. And what I thought I'd do, I think we will bring them back at a future date, but instead of bringing them back all at one time. For instance, I believe that we should look at the, the alternative parking approaches, in fact, I know we need to. And I would like to look at the AUP for the, the liquor license on that. But each of those require some additional determination and we'll go forward and do that then, but we can bring those back, I think no more than two at a time, so it's not. Yes, I guess I want dazzle also, because it's such a great acronym, but.
To get, to get, if I may, to get a liquor license, it's, it's, it's almost a year process to do that. I mean, we're not hurting anything, we're not hurting anything, we're trying to make it easier for business.
Ray, I completely agree with you and I think that we will bring those back, I just think that it was probably too much reach. To bring back five at the summertime and ask for some kind of blanket recommendation to go forward, we won't do that, we'll bring these back. Two at a time and no more at the time as we go forward.
City of government goes on again.
Yeah.
You know, just, just to give it to clarify, like to clarify just on that first bullet point. Regarding the, the alcohol licenses, I, I'm not opposed it, I just would like clarity on whether if the. Director of planning would be able to herself set conditions upon any of those.
The, the answer is it still goes to the council, but what you don't have is a recommending agency, you skip that process going through, so. The director sets the conditions and it comes back directly to council.
So like, like, for example? So like, like for example, on the second bullet point on the parking, I, again, I have no issues. Like I'm, I'm ready to do it tonight. But on that first bullet point, that's really all the clarity I needed was if she would be allowed to place conditions.
So you just set the first two that we'll bring back and then we'll just bring this back as soon as we.
I have no issues. I see the value in that.
And, and Carl wants me to bring back dazzle too. So we'll bring that one through as well. I got you.
So does that make sense what I'm saying, Mr. Santiness?
Mayor, I'm, I'm just trying to, um, i- in defense of Ms. Corpus. I think she brought this up item, these items only for, for, hold on, hold on, for direction. Not to take action because these actions need to take a public hearing.
Agreed. No, you, here's what's happening, I think. The, let's not, we're reading too much into this. What's happening is there's a lot of duplicative practice going on with the planning commission and the city council on this thing. So, uh, right now the planning department has the burden of pulling together. These enormous staff reports to put before the planning commission. Planning commission takes action on them, you know. Ninety-nine times out of a hundred, planning commission takes those recommendations, may make a, a handful of comments and then goes to the council. So we're basically duplicating the same process twice. And I don't know that that was the intent of that. I think the planning commission has a, a fair amount of discretionary authority. As Ms. Corpus indicated earlier, and I think that's what's going to happen. I think over the years. And a lot, and I've looked, I've worked for cities that have done it too. A lot of cities have just. Hand it off the, a lot of these responsibilities getting back to the planning commission. So they can see how the coffee cools on the saucer before they take these issues up. I actually think that is counterproductive. I'm with Mr. Dutton on that one. And I think that's the reason why they're coming back. We're trying to. We've, we've made a lot of strides in the city and becoming more efficient at our entitlement process. And this is no exception to that. So what we have here, I think are good government practices. I also have learned and I should have learned the lesson long ago is that sometimes there's too much at one time. You know, you can't eat the elephant all at one time. We should be taking these things up one or two at a time. So it isn't so alarming. We're not looking to gut, uh, the, the authority of the planning commission. Conversely, what we're looking to do is reassert the authority of the city council over things that they ultimately do have authority for.
So again, for the record, I, I don't mind considering that those first two bullet points and the fifth one at our next meeting, but. I have no issues personally, so. Yes, please.
Fact that there was going to be a charge for the parking areas the city owns would be built back to the. The operator? The business owner, if they want to utilize the parking lot behind their, their business.
There's some kind of fee structure already.
Fee structure that we already have in place where we're not assured of it. That can't be a lot of money and I'm looking, how, that's kind of counterproductive, isn't it?
Well, that's why I want to find out about it.
I want to find out about it, but I, I, I'm of the mind to say, you know, I'm glad you're going to operate out here. I don't want to take fifty bucks a month or a hundred or whatever it is. And we're going to spend that much time administrating it. So that's part of the discussion. Find out what it's, what we pay and what we're not. And I'd rather just give it to them.
Because that can be waived during this time period, one year. Anyway.
That's fine. And I don't look for them to operate.
Depending on how much they're charging.
Yeah, but I can't imagine it being a lot of money.
If it's a nominal thing, let it go.
Let it go because that's not what we're trying to do here. Okay. Enough said.
This is good. All right. So, um, why don't we open it up for public comments at this point, please? Madam Deputy City Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the raise hand feature.
No problem. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comments at this time.
Great. Thank you so much for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. All right, gentlemen, any final questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
If you're ready. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, um, make a motion for city council bellflower to adopt. Ordinance number thirteen ninety-two and, and a codified urgency ordinance implementing the Bellflower Business Recovery Program. And causing the city of Bellflower, city council to act as the Bellflower Planning Agency. In accordance with Bellflower Municipal Code, section two point three, two point oh five oh. Second.
All right. So I have a motion by council member Santiness and a second by council member Hamada. Roll call, please.
Council member Santiness?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Council member Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much for that, gentlemen. Item number thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
Oh, well, second.
My bad. Thank you for that. So is there a motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, that's agreed by title only, wait for the reading and, and then introduce ordinance. Number thirteen ninety-two and that's an uncodified ordinance implementing the Bellflower. Business recovery program and causing the council to act as the Bellflower Planning Agency. In accordance with Bellflower Municipal Code, two point three, two point oh five oh.
We're done with that.
What's that?
The next one. You're thirteen ninety-two. Mine was thirteen ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Did I say two? Yeah.
No, you said ninety-three.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
You said ninety-three. I heard you.
Yeah.
I was reading with you.
Okay.
Making you weren't, making sure you weren't switching anything.
No, that was me.
We were just clarifying.
All right. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by council member Hamada, second by mayor Protem Coops. Uh, roll call, please.
Council member Santiness?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Council member Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you staff and my colleagues for catching me on that. Okay. So now we move on to item thirteen A, Mr. Stewart.
So this is consideration possible action to approve fireworks stand permit for Bellflower High School band boosters and to allow the original permittees to remain. On the eligibility list for twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I believe we have a staff report by Ms. Corpus.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Over the background, back in April. Of twenty twenty, the council approved fourteen applications for fireworks permits. Approving these applications were conditional upon social distancing protocols. That were considered and approved at your May eleventh meeting. Uh, since that date. Two permittees, which is the Bellflower Boys Basketball Booster and Saint Dominic Savio. Withdrew, withdrew their application, uh, due to COVID nineteen concerns. They were having a problem, um, seeking volunteers to run the booths. And then at least one of them didn't have authorization from their archdiocese to do it because of COVID. Uh, so as a result, we did reach out to the two organizations that were on the waiting list. And one of the organizations, which is Bellflower Band Boosters, applied for their permits. So that is what you were considering tonight. Um, I will also note that we have an eligible, eligibility list every year and it's typically the same fourteen permittees that are. Um, eligible. If the council does approve, does approve this fireworks permit application tonight. The original list of permittees will still maintain their place in the eligibility list. So what that means is Bellflower Boys Basketball and Saint Dominic Savio. Even though they withdrew this year due to COVID concerns. Next year, they will still remain on that eligibility list for fireworks. And then the Bellflower Band Boosters, if you approve that tonight. For the year twenty twenty-one, they will revert back to the waiting list. And that was also explained to them. Um, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Uh, the recommendation tonight is to approve the fireworks stand permits for Bellflower Band Boosters. And to allow the original permittees to remain on the eligibility list for twenty twenty-one. Um, alternatively. You can discuss and take other action related to this item. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Corpus. Uh, questions from the council, Mr. Dutton?
I think it's the right thing to do is, is, uh, establish the line and let somebody fill in when somebody's vacant.
Okay. Thank you so much. Uh, Mayor Protem Coops?
I believe the same thing. I think it's a simple request. Let's, uh, give them the chance to have a fireworks stand.
Mr. Hamada?
Uh, yes, I concur and. Again, I, again, I believe it was actually three that dropped out. Uh, look at the Bellflower High School Football. Boosters had dropped, but then they're back in. Cause I thought maybe it, it was a school thing that they wouldn't permit them on the school during this time, but. Uh, the boost, the bands backs, the bands included, so, so that, uh, that took care of that question. So. No, again, uh, it's, it's good that, uh, uh, we would honor, uh, um, the original permittees, uh, to, uh. Hold, uh, till next year also. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member Hamada, council member Santiness?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, um, Elizabeth, thank you so much for coming up with this, uh, solution. I think it's a fair solution. And, uh, e- especially for, um, Saint Dominic Savio for the reason, I mean, they. They answered to a higher authority for withdrawing from this, um, um, fireworks sale. So. I, I think I'm, 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 I agree with your recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Santiness. I, I echo all these comments, so. So with that, uh, let's open it up for public comments. Uh, Madam Deputy City Clerk?
Uh, yes, Mayor. I'll give the public just a moment.
No problem.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Deputy City Clerk. So with that, any final questions, comments, gentlemen? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the Bellflower High School Band Boosters to have their. Fireworks stand in place of the Saint Dominic Savio and football. What was the, what was the other activity at Bellflower High?
The list.
I know it's all Bellflower High, but anyway, put them on the eligibility list, let the, uh. The band boosters go forward.
Thank you, sir. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
All right. So I have a motion by Mayor Protem Coops and a second by council member Dutton. Roll call, please.
Council member Santiness?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Council member Dutton?
Aye.
Council member Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. All right. Item thirteen B, Mr. Stewart.
Yeah, this is, um, consideration possible action to select two members of the city council serves and economic development subcommittee authorized to meet with city staff.
That's not B, that's C.
I'm sorry, I skipped one. All right, let's see. Consideration possible action to conceal summer twenty twenty special events due to COVID nineteen pandemic. And restrictions mandated by the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health Order. Mr. Milano is here to make the presentation to you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Mr. Milano.
And members of the city council, uh, just a quick sound check. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Uh, you may recall that on, uh, May eleventh, uh, the city council approved a plan of action. Uh, proposed by staff that canceled the original eight week slate of summer special events. That original, uh, schedule was replaced with an alternate and tentative slate of events, uh, that included, uh, four concerts only. To begin on Ju- July thirtieth, only if the restrictions on gatherings were lifted to, uh, permit such type of events. A final decision, uh, on this alternate schedule was to be considered tonight. Um, and if it was feasible, staff would utilize the thirty day period to mobilize. Book entertainment, schedule staff and security and assess the feasibility of social distancing and the public health requirements. As of the revised safer at home order issued on July eleventh for this report and then again updated on June eighteenth. Uh, by the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health, all events and gatherings are cons- are still considered higher risk type of activities. And they continue to be, uh, prohibited. The order also specifically ma- uh, mandates the continued closure of, uh, public entertainment venues. Uh, concert venues and any type of festivals. Additionally, there is no indication that these pro- uh, prohibitions on events and gatherings will be lifted for the summer of twenty twenty. So with that, staff's recommendation to the city council is, uh, to ca- cancel the summer twenty twenty special events due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And the restrictions mandated by the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health Order. Or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. And that concludes my report's evening. And I'd be happy to take any questions or, or comments from, uh, the council.
Thank you for that report, Mr. Milano. Um, let's take questions from the council. Council member Santiness?
No question, um, Mr. Mayor, other than saying that, um, i- it is unfortunate, but, um, I, I think, um. I commend staff for coming up with this recommendation. I know it's kind of, um, a hard pill to swallow for them. Uh, without activities and, uh, we're going to miss all the summer activities. I mean. Downtown, it just boom during the, um, during the summer months, especially with the street fest and movie nights and all those things. Uh, it's unfortunate, but, um, uh, public safety and the health of our residents is the primary concern. And so I, I think we have to go along with the recommendation of staff. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Santiness. Uh, council, uh, Mayor Protem Coops?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, I, I believe in the report, PJ, you're going to examine. Sometime in July with the Lions members, the, whether or not we can go forward with the car show. Does that sound right?
Consent item as well, uh, fourteen I, which has a list of other events we're considering in the future. Um, but yes, the car show, we, we've met once already with the New Lions. Uh, we plan to meet again. In early July to see where we're at, uh, with the health order and. If there is a possibility to bring an alternate type event with restrictions back to the council. Uh, sometime before that event, uh, but, uh, we're still just kind of in a wait and see mode for, for the car show, but we will be meeting with them again in early July.
So if we eliminate, the, if we cancel the summer two thousand twenty special events. That would basically get us to the potential of the car show, correct?
Yes, sir. And next in line for the, for our typical annual schedule, uh, would be the car show. Uh, and then behind that would be state of the city, mayor's prayer breakfast and, and some other events. And the car show. Uh, is slated, uh, to be September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty right now. Um, per our meeting, uh, original meeting with them, we have all targeted a date for a final decision on, to bring to council. Um, eh, some type of plan, uh, the second meeting in August to again, go back to what we've previously discussed as far as having a. A thirty day ramp up for any type of alternative. So. We're going to keep monitoring that as we go, but as of now, the way things have been going and the. Comments being made by the officials in the health department and the governor. Um, it, it doesn't look good for gatherings, uh, for the foreseeable future for twenty twenty, but. We are monitoring it closely with, uh, the New Lions.
All right. Thank you, PJ.
Thank you so much for that, Mayor Protem Coops. Uh, council member Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, uh. PJ, you made reference to utilizing a thirty day period, if feasible. Say in July. Um, something happens where it's lifted. To do possibly August, there's no chance.
They're not with the original slate we did, uh, are, and not having a city council meeting for the second. Meeting in July, uh, going on, we're, we're typically dark on there. It does make it very difficult. Um, especially with the four weeks. We, we could potentially look. At, um, shortening that if we could, you know, kick it down the road three weeks, but I don't foresee anything happening. What I. What I would really recommend is if during. Anytime this summer, whether it's August or even when we get into September, if we see that restriction lifted. To bring it back to council, uh, as you know, we, we've also asked council to not, um, uh. Take away any special event budget until January twenty twenty-one to give us that flexibility where if something was lifted, we could come back and say. Would we like to consider some type of concert in the fall or even during the spring? To bring something back for the community. So we do, we are able to do that. For summer, I think it's going to be very difficult with the timeline we're on and again, being dark with the second meeting in July and, and needing. Uh, city council direction on this, um, uh, to sort through, um, planning for it.
Yeah, I can see logistically, uh, be a difficult, but, uh, uh. Any future thought, maybe doing like a, a big, big weekend kind of thing? On, on consecutive days?
Uh, we've, have not done anything on consecutive days in a few years.
Yeah.
Right, right now I would say no, just staffing wise and logistically. I would think if we did bring something back, uh, any day of the week would be appropriate, um. Where we could look at our special event, uh, schedule and bring it back. I, I would not. Um, recommend any multi-day, uh, large event, large scale event at this point in time, uh, if we do come back. I, I, my personal recommendation. Uh, from our department would be to come back with the single, uh, concert, um, and with going with the. Uh, social distancing restrictions that may be in place.
Yeah. Yeah, again, no pressure, PJ. Yeah, it, again, uh, uh, just echo the comment. It's, it's, it's sad to see. So, uh, um, every, a lot of people look forward to it. So. But better luck hopefully, uh, in the very near future. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But better luck, hopefully, in the very near future. Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, PJ.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with canceling with these unknown times, unless you have a crystal ball, you can't book entertainment. But I would like to keep it open like the discussion was, is to think outside the box. Maybe things will change even through October, who knows? But this gives us a chance to think outside the box. Some ideas were floated, even PJ, you floated a couple ideas, whatever, what to do. Keep the budget intact. Maybe we'll come up with something that, an idea that we never ever thought of before. You know, it's similar to to some of the ideas here tonight, is to try to do something, and you try to make a, I've always tried in my life, is try to make a positive out of negative. This is a negative, I can foresee a positive, and maybe we'll come with a, come out with a niche. But I like to cancel and keep it open. That's it.
Alright. Thank you, Councilmember Dutton. I feel the same way, just, it's unfortunate. I just want to commend staff for coming up with alternatives. I know it's been a fluid process, and it's frustrating not only for staff, but also for our residents who have come to expect these events every single year, and the fact that we won't have them is, I know it's disappointing to the whole community, so. Again, thank you, staff, for this, and I think it's the right call as well. So with that, let's take some comments from the public. Madam Deputy City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the feature. Mister Mister Wehag, if you'll give me just a moment to get the timer up on the screen, and then you can go ahead and begin.
I liked his raised hand, he actually was raising his hand.
Do you see me?
It wasn't a digital hand.
Okay, go ahead, Mister Wehag.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, and fellow Belflorians. It's disappointing that this virus has reared its ugly head again and raised some of the numbers. I do want to propose that consideration be made to possibly utilize the parking structure to hold a smaller car show with access limited at the various entrance points. Do it on the same day, September twenty-sixth. And reason being is that I've got some nineteen fifty Belflower residents who own cars, and said, if there is no car show, they're gonna show up anyway, and have a pop-up cruise night, or cruise day, whatever you want to call it, but they said they're coming. And I just want to bring that to the council members' attention. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Mister Wehag. I know that happened this past Friday. It was pretty popular, it was good. Okay, so any final questions, comments, gentlemen? We're good? Mr. Stewart? Alright, so I'll entertain a motion regarding staff's recommendation on thirteen B.
Yes, Mister Mayor, I would sadly make the motion to cancel the summer twenty twenty special events due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and and restrictions mandated by the County of Los Angeles Department of Public Health Order.
I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Great, thank you so much. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hamada and a second by Councilmember Santenes. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenes?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Koops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. Item thirteen C, Mr. Stewart.
Now's the time for the Economic Development Subcommittee. So back in twenty sixteen, the council formed an Economic Development Subcommittee to basically assist staff in working with developers and working on some of the wrinkles that might happen in getting a project approved by the city council and planning commission. It was designed to be at that time an ad hoc Subcommittee, and it has served well as such an ad hoc Subcommittee. But good government being what it is, it's not a permanent Subcommittee, so periodically, it's a good idea to revisit these things and look at the membership of it, and make recommendations for another two or three years as an ad hoc Subcommittee without a defined term, because you cannot define terms and not make it a permanent Subcommittee. Certainly not the aim here. I will say that from staff's perspective, the membership of the current committee has worked out well, but that isn't a council decision. It's up to the city council to make it. So if the council chooses to stand with the current committee, that's fine. If it chooses to appoint two more other members to serve on a Subcommittee for an indeterminate time in the future, that's fine as well. It's just that we need to make some kind of a decision on that, just for matters of making sure that we don't have a permanent Subcommittee by accident.
Thank you so much, Mr. Stewart, for that. Report, Councilmember Santenes?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your introduction. Let me just say that the Economic Development Subcommittee has worked so well in the past. Councilmember Koops and Mayor Protem Koops and Councilmember Dutton had done a fabulous job in their role as members of this Subcommittee. And I don't want to take anything away from them, but at the same time, I was kind of thinking that it may be time for them to kind of share their knowledge with the rest of the council members. And so one thing, that one proposal I have in mind is to to make them, one of them, a permanent member of the committee on a rotating basis. And the other member will rotate based on the district. So for example, let's say if there's a project in District One, and the council member is Councilmember Hamada, one of the two members, either Mayor Protem Koops or Councilmember Dutton, will be the other member of the committee, depending on on them, okay. If one is recused, also that member is definitely out. But the other, other than that, they will pick and choose among them, because I think there's a lot of value in terms of their knowledge, but what is, what I'm missing here is they, all of us here will not be here forever. So I think it's time for us to get some kind of training, so to speak. So by doing that, they can pass on that kind of knowledge to one of us on a rotating basis, at the same time keeping their body of knowledge in the Subcommittee. So that would be my recommendation for consideration.
Great. Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Santenes. Councilmember Dutton?
I appreciate Councilmember Santenes on the compliments of the Subcommittee and the job that we've done. It has been trying. You have a unique idea, and I'm processing it, processing it right now. I've always looked at it as the experience as a small businessman, thirty years. I know what, personally, what these, what how people think. I've done projects, I don't know. I got a whole page here of stuff that I wrote, and I'm not one to ring my own bell. And that's not the way I, I'm cut out of cloth. I think the reason that Dan and I have been on this for so long is because we have the wherewithal and the know-how, and we've lived in this town so long, and we see change, and things that we've talked about is young stuff, new ideas, and we're trying to, I've always tried to keep myself believing in a new way of doing things and not getting stuck in old ways. That's the way I will live my life, my business, and the way I look at the city forward. I see the merits of what you're trying to say. But I personally know what a developer goes through from buying land, scraping land, I've lived it. I've repurposed the land, got the entitlements. I've lived all that. From construction to building it out, and I can't believe how many meetings I've been here in City Hall prior to being even connected. The, you know, it's all about economic development, that's where my heart is. The it started a little, it goes far back with me, and my heart is measure A and measure B, because we talked about back in those days, if we got a little extra money to put an economic development department together with people or whatever, and it took a while to get that, and we eventually got it. When you talk to a developer, sometimes they want to short-sheet the bed. They, they, you know, you gotta read between the lines, your projects, you know, has a smell test to it, and you know when they're trying to put something over on you, and you get it. But then you know about the small businesses that come into something, and how they're struggling to get it. It could be a developer doing a big project, or it could be a one small businessman, he's got everything on the line to try to get something. And you have to get him over the hurdle, and one, and I preached it for so long, is trying, you know, the public system takes so long to get stuff done. And it does, and even with the entitlements and the building process, and even getting financing, there's projects here that we've done and here that started five years before they had a shovel in the ground. I think, you know, the talent at this point in time outweighs, I don't know how you train thirty years of business experience and thirty years of doing projects to someone that's never lived it. I've learned the hard way all my life. I'm not an educated man, but I'm educated for hard knocks, and and I know, I know things, and that's how I've done things. I really think that, you know, I'm gonna say my qualifications and Dan's qualifications are something that just totally outweighs of trying to change things, and with that, I'm just gonna let that go, because I really don't want to ring my own bell, so to speak, but I, you know, I have my hands in it, and I've done it for thirty years, I've carried a payroll, I know, I know both sides from the developer to the businessman. With that, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you so much for that, Councilmember Dutton. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I do recognize the the current talent of Mister Koops and Mister Dutton on the Subcommittee. Again, they have the longest institutional knowledge sitting here, and and I believe that's very important, and they've seen what's come before here for decades, you know, on. I mean, even though I've lived here all my life, I, you know, I spent a lot of my time outside the city, working for other cities, so it was a different setting, and so on. I do have background in like economic development, but I think, and I'll say right now with my added my added assignments with SCAG, and it looks like I'm gonna expand on the California Contract Cities, and there's some, there's an endeavor with the League of California Cities. Even though I would be interested and would enjoy it, but I think for now, I think what's gonna, what works now, I think I would I would concur with that option. Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Mayor Protem Koops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the wonderful assets of this city council is we all bring something different to the table. We all have different experiences. And Sonny, with your accounting background and management of human resources, it's invaluable. Ray coming on board with having the knowledge of other cities, worked in planning, gives us insight beyond the confines of Belflower. One, of course, is business, is relationships and business, and knowing people beyond our city boundaries, like Judge Carter, like the mayor of LA, like the Assembly Speaker. He has influence that none of us have ever had, or will ever have, that benefits the city. Ray and I are small businessmen, and we bring a different perspective to the council. Not one of knowledge of political folks in the area, not of being an accountant, not of being an educated UCLA alum that knows how to do planning work in different city settings. This is what we know. And when fifteen years ago, let me roll the, I served on the planning commission twenty years, probably a record, because I'd get flipped between Mister Baumgar's and Mister Cleveland, but I was on there twenty years before I came here. And so when Mister John Pratt came to me, and he said, I want you to be my planning commissioner. I said, I'm already working for Baumgar's. He says, yeah, but I like what you do, and I want you to be on my team. He says, if you can't do it, who should I get? I said, you call Ray Dutton, he just built a new building, he's gone through the fires of City Hall work. Yeah, he knows this stuff. And so he went over and talked to Ray, and Ray didn't see it coming. But that conversation convinced him, I can help the city, and he didn't take it right away. It took two weeks before he said he'd do it. And that conversation got him on planning commission, and you saw what an asset he has been on council throughout the years. That was just, and his intro into this thing was the planning area, because he had built his building. Now, I'm like Ray, I'm not here to talk you about what my accomplishments have been in the world of development, but I can tell you this. I have a bachelor's degree in development, I have a broker's license in the Department of Real Estate. I developed my first complex in Belfar when I was twenty-nine years old, five-hundred-thousand-dollar project that I borrowed every dollar on. I am proud of what it is that Ray and I bring to the development picture. And I believe the city has recognized all of our achievements, but we all look good because that Belfar Boulevard has come to life. And Ray and I aren't taking credit for that, but we kept it on the right place. And when we were able to pull a deal together, and we all know that first one was that Golden Corral deal, and that was not easy. That was meant to be built where Ray Flatabo was meant to go, but through changes, it ended up where it is. And that got others enthused, you know, now we got Dunkin' Donuts, we got In-N-Out, and we've got the parking garage, and we've got the fire museum, that all came subsequent to that.
Hey, Dan?
Yeah.
I thought I'd butt in your thing, but Ron Snoblinger got the Golden Corral, we didn't.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Alright. Well. Alright, we'll give credit where credit's due, but I do remember being in that back room, and Mister Stewart went to the bathroom, and they didn't want to pay the property taxes, remember? But anyway, I digress. But I think this, you have a team of guys here that has, and there was a point in time when this city utilized councilmen that were looking out for their own benefit. That's not Ray and I. We're looking out to make the city better, and you know that. And the way things are going, we may have to pay for the Christmas tree lighting again, but but anyway, there's my speech. We do a good work, I'm proud of what we've done, I'm enthusiastic about the possibilities in the future. I'd like to stay.
Thank you so much for that, Mayor Protem Koops. Good comments. You know, I think if there's one thing I could say after the end of this item is that whichever way this goes, we're all gonna win. At the end of the day, I think the talent that we all bring in this council is without question, right? And I see the value in the continuity, I also see the value in trying a different tact. Where I'm at is that the voters have told us that they want districts, and so for me, it's the reality where, you know, we are a council that was elected at large. I mean, some of us were re-elected. I mean, some of us were re-elected, right? Without having to run again, but under the district system. But nonetheless, you were, your roots are from the at-large and I think we, we think city. But I think the future, whether we like it or not, is as some of us get off, like when I get off, here in the next six months, you know, the reality is that the next person will be, their roots are gonna be district and I think it's gonna phase that way. I'm, I'm, there's no, there's no diminishing the, in my opinion, the, the contributions that these two gentlemen have made to the economic development of our city. It's without question. But I also see where the future is going and I think personally, again, despite the fact that I won't be here, I see the value in investing in, in the next generation that's gonna come up and having them to learn by fire and to be in the, in the trenches and learn from this. And so I think, you know, one of the questions was, you know, that, that there's a desire to make the city look good. I think we all want that, right? I don't think it's without question that we all want that. I know that I, I personally have experienced with development as well. You know, some of my clients are developers and I, I get in the weeds on everything from the permitting process to the financing, from finding investors in New York, from actually soliciting and hiring contractors. I mean, I get involved in the minutia of things. I come from a small business family as well, so we've, you know, where we had a race capital, put on a small business together, sweating tears in a restaurant, you know, starting from, you could get that there at six in the morning and you're there till ten or eleven at night. You know, and I've, I've done everything from cashiering to mopping to going and purchasing things at, at, at Fedco and all these stores. So I, I, again, I think we all bring a substantial amount of, of experience here. And, and I really think that whichever way we go, it's gonna be a win-win. But I, I do, personally, I see the value, I really hadn't thought of it until, and I think that's, I was like Councilmember Dutton when Sonny mentioned about the dual role of having, when the experience was one from the district, then I thought, I hadn't thought of it because I'm so, I sort of think of it just city. But the reality is that we have a development that's in District One. You know, I think the voter would expect that their council member would have some sort of input in the development that happens in their district, right? Or in the initial development, so again, not, so my opinion is it's not necessarily a diminution of, of this. I think it's worked well, but I just think where we're going, I think there's value in, in the proposition that Councilmember Sonny Santenaz has made. So those are my comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add, I just want to emphasize that I wasn't thinking about the district in coming up with a recommendation. It's more of my main purpose is, just like what Councilmember Dutton mentioned, they have so much knowledge. But only two of them are in the table. We don't know what happens in the table, okay? So if one of you walks away anyway from the council, somebody has to be trained eventually. And I hope you don't, you don't leave the council at the same time. Then we're gonna be in deep trouble. But if one of you leaves, then one of us or another person has to be trained anyway, eventually. So that's why I was coming up with an idea of we need to train someone new and keep them. That's the main goal. And it's just, I thought about, well, maybe the, the, so the, the district became secondary. But my main purpose is we need to share the knowledge because all the knowledge is basically kept with the two of you. And again, you've done so much wonderful job. We just want to learn. I think it's more of training the others so that we can step up later on if we are called upon. So I think to me, it's, it's a good transition. We keep one of you. If it's District One, Three, or, or Four, if it's Five or, Five or Two, you're the member automatically, so.
It's not, it's not something that's training. I get training. There's no book to train. It's life experiences. I mean, it's, there's no protocol to train. I mean, I think this, it's basically, we would be more mentors than anything else. It wouldn't be training, training's the wrong word. It's, it's, it's not training. It'd be more mentorship or, or grooming or, or something like that, but training's not the right word.
Well, whatever, whatever it is, it's more of sharing the body of knowledge. Because let me just take for example, let's say if you walk away tomorrow from City Council, what happens to us?
Oh yeah, no, I see it. Gotta find your way, you know, the hard way. That's where I, that's where I live my life, hard knocks. I seem to do alright. Some people got it, some don't, you know, that's not saying that, don't take that derogatory. I'm sorry.
A little, it's just, but it's been said.
In this new world, you gotta watch what you're saying. If that was texted, it would be really a
No, my comments, my last comment was just, you know, economic development is so multifaceted, right? It's, it's so many different types of economic development. But anyways, any final comments before we ask the public gentleman? Again, okay, so can we, Madam Deputy City Clerk, can we open it up for a public comment regarding item thirteen C, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment.
On the white.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that, Madam Deputy City Clerk. Okay, so any final questions, comments, gentlemen? Alright, so hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to keep me and Dan on it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Councilmember Dutton and I have a second by Mayor Protem Coops. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
No.
Thank you so much. Let's go with item, I think the next item is, consent calendar. Alright, are there any items that council members wish to be pulled for separate discussion or consideration?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like just want to pull item E and H, just for discussion, but not separate vote.
So
Just for discussion, E and H.
E and H. And H, okay.
And Mr. Mayor, on fourteen H, I'm out because I've got property along the Boulevard there.
Okay, so then we'll, when we get to that, we'll, we'll Are there any other items that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just, I just want to state for fourteen J, again, I'm on the Board Directors of Kingdom Causes. And it's a volunteer position, so I, I can stick around to act on it.
Great, thank you so much. So that's for the record. So why don't we, why don't we handle item fourteen E at this point?
Is Mr. Gureki on the line? Okay, Mr. Gureki.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, on page, just a question on page three. The upper, the proposed operating budget, I see three line items here. Office expense, uniforms, $23,200 in 2021. And then insurance, $12,900. And then information technology, $30,100. They were zero in 2019, 2020. And then we have some amounts in 2020, 21. Can you just explain what those are for?
Yeah, yes, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. The process of doing the municipal water system budget typically starts off with the accounting firm that's hired by Bellflower Somerset. And a couple of years ago, we started going through the process of expanding and showing more detail with the operating expenses. During that transition, with, what we ended up with last year was them not showing the correct numbers for those line items. So essentially, they, they were omitted and, and combined into other line items. This year, they just broke them out a little more.
Okay, alright, thank you. And then on item fourteen H?
Hold on, Mr. Santenaz, are we done with fourteen E? That completes your questions?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Alright, so on fourteen H? Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem, don't go too far. It's gonna be a quick question.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem.
Mr. Gureki, just for the benefit of our listening public again, the question is, when we did the resurfacing of Alondra Boulevard from Bellflower, it went all the way to the city border, to the east. Based on this, you're proposing the surfacing from Bellflower West going all the way to Lakewood. So my question is, why didn't we go all the way to the city limit?
For the sake of doing the resolution and putting it on the, the agenda item tonight, we, we probably omitted that last little block. When we do the design for it, we would actually design all the way to the West City Limit, which is right there at Hayter Street. So it's most likely a, a clerical error on our end. But given the, the resources and the requirement that we have to do to get this project on the list with the state, we just put it out there to Lakewood Boulevard, but that's a easy correction for us. And wait, once the funding is available, how far we end up going will, along, Alondra will be based on the funding that we receive from the state and SB 1.00. So because of the, the pandemic and the projections for the, the tax bases that fund those restricted funds are kind of trending to be a little lighter, we may not even have enough money to complete all the way to Lakewood Boulevard. Nonetheless, for the purpose of the resolution and getting it in front of the state, as we're required to do, we just listed it out at Lakewood. We, we missed that last block in short.
Yeah, I, I bring this up because I get some complaints from, from residents living in that area that they are the forgotten section of the city, west of Lakewood Boulevard. And if we don't do Alondra all the way to City Limit, that just kind of reinforced that argument.
Yeah, I would, I would not disagree with that. Again, it was, it was a clerical error on our end. We should have sent it to the West City Limit, not Lakewood Boulevard. Hey, for, for the most part, you know, we'll, we'll make that correction when we go through design and we find out what funding we have for the project that upcoming year.
Okay, so I'm asking that, do your best to include that as much as you can, so, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. No, not a problem. Thank you so much. We'll wait till Mayor Protem Coops returns. Welcome back, Mayor Protem. Okay, so any other items from the consent calendar? Hearing, seeing none, then is there a motion?
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I can make just one quick note regarding the correction to fourteen G. It's just a clerical error on the fiscal years that are noted in the agreement that was caught by the Director of Finance, so we corrected that.
Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. So, hey, Mayor? Yes, sir.
I want to recuse myself from item K.
Item K, okay.
Okay, cause I got, I was on a used oil dump station.
Okay, not a problem. So when we take the vote, if we could just reflect that, yeah, he is conflicting himself out of fourteen K. So, so is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved with the recusal, as noted.
And the amendments?
And the amendment on G, is it G?
Yeah, second.
Alright, so I have a motion by Councilmember Santenaz and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye. Thank you so much for that, Madam City Clerk. Next up.
Okay, so why don't we take a, a five-minute recess? It is nine forty-one and we will return here in the next five minutes.
Should we, should we have, open it up so I can recuse myself?
Thank you. Let's do that, please, if you don't mind. Thank you, sir. So I will rescind that recess.
Let me introduce, let Ray recuse himself and then we'll take the break. So this is a public hearing. It's consideration of possible
Just real quick, Mr. Stewart, so item eleven A, please. Mrs. Stewart, thank you.
Yeah, it's consideration of possible action to conduct a public hearing to consider mixed-use product or properties located at 16411 Bellflower Boulevard, 9735 Oak Street and 9742 Main Street within the downtown Bellflower TOD specific plan, including without limitation residential and commercial buildings with a movie theater. Two, adopt resolution number 2029, a resolution adopting mitigated negative declaration number MND 20-0-1 and approving a mixed-use development at 16411 Bellflower Boulevard, 9735 Oak Street and 9742 Main Street within the downtown Bellflower TOD specific plan, which include residential and commercial uses, including without limitation a movie theater TOD PR 1-20-10630, BTM number 82987, ACU 20-01 and CU 20-02 and three, read by title only, wait for the reading and introduce ordinance number 1391 and ordinance approving the development agreement file number 837-1.1 in a form approved by the city attorney by and between the city of Bellflower and 16411 Bellflower LLC to facilitate development of the property, including parking license agreements and some of the required off-street parking.
Wow, that was a marathon.
Want to hear it again?
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Stewart. Alright, I will consider any conflicts at this point?
Yeah, Mayor, I gotta recuse myself from item eleven A, due to I have property within 500 feet of that project.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Dutton, and please let the record reflect that, my Councilmember Dutton is conflicted from this. So it is nine forty-three by my watch. We're gonna take a brief recess, so we will be back by nine fifty. Thank you. No, I was like, no, man. You want me? Okay. Okay, are we good? All right, it is 9:50 by my watch, and so we are reconvening the meeting. Item 11A, I know we already introduced it, so I think we have a staff report-
We do. I think Jason Clark and Beth are going to tag team this one, and I believe Jason's going to lead off for us. Is that so?
Oh, that's correct.
Jason, are you up or are you?
Yeah, can you guys? Be my screen.
We can barely hear you. Could you speak up on that?
Can you hear me?
No.
Jason, are you sharing your PowerPoint?
Uh, yes. Can you guys see it?
Yes, we can see it. Thank you, Jason.
Okay. Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Good evening, public. Nice item, agenda item 11A, MND 20-01. Let me know if you can't hear me. TOD PR PR 120, 10630, CU 2002, ACU 2001, BTM 82987, and DA 873.1, located at 16411 Artesia Boulevard, 9742 Main Avenue, and 9735 Oak Street. A little background on the project. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you so much, Jason.
Okay.
Can they enlarge the PowerPoint presentation? Make it the whole screen?
Uh, hang on for a second.
Not a problem, thank you.
Okay, how about now?
Mr. Santenaz, is that good?
Uh, is that okay, everybody?
Yes, please go ahead and proceed, sir. Thank you.
Okay. On April 24th, just to give you a little background on the project, on April 24th, 2018, a request for proposal of disposition and development of the subject property for a mixed-use development was submitted. On October 22nd, 2018, the applicant was selected for the RFP and agreement file number 820 was executed. On July 8th, 2019, resolution number 19-59 was approved, given the city council authority as acting as a planning agency for the project. On August 12th, 2019, agreement file number 837, acquisition of real property between the city of Bellflower and the applicant was executed. On December 23rd, 2019, a project application was received by the applicant for the proposed mixed-use development project. The request includes a mitigated negative declaration to approve the environmental document prepared for the project, a TOD development review, TOD PR, to review the development and architectural design of the project for compatibility, a conditional use permit to allow public assembly use for 278-seat movie theater on parcel A. Additionally, a CUP to allow a five-story, 55-foot height building on parcel B. Administrative conditional use permit, ACU, to allow ancillary onsite sale of alcohol. The movie theater will have a type 41 license, on sale beer and wine eating place, and future restaurant uses, type 47 licenses, on sale general eating place for same site but for future uses. A vesting tentative map is also submitted. The vesting tentative map will create two parcels. Parcel A for the theater and retail use, and parcel B for creating the 91 residential condominium units. And lastly, a development agreement by and between the city of Bellflower and the applicant to facilitate development of the subject property, including parking license agreements that would allow transfer of the required 94 parking spaces for the commercial component and nine guest parking spaces for the residential component of the project. The subject site is located between Main Street, Bellflower Boulevard, and Oak Street. The subject site is adjacent to the city parking structure and several feet from the future Metro Bellflower Station. The zoning for the property is multi-layered. The underlying zone, the current, sorry, the current zoning is TOD SP. The property also has an overlay of BVOZN. The project site is 69,469 square feet, which is 1.596 acres. Parcel A is 20,776 square feet. It's one-story. It's a existing building that will be redeveloped and modified into a 9,350-square-foot four-screen theater and a 4,750-square-foot restaurant retail uses. The building also has a trash enclosure. The, to the right, or the west side of the building, sorry, the east side of the building will include a public colonnade and parklets for outside dining and eating. The site has off-site commercial parking requested for 92 spaces per the DA. And parcel B is the mixed-use development. It is 48,733 square feet in size. The building, once again, is five stories in height. There's a total of 91 units. 52 of those units are one bedrooms, and 39 of those units are two bedrooms. The site also includes 650 square feet of commercial retail space. Parking for the mixed-use residential is parked at 1.5 spaces per unit. This includes 52 spaces, which are standard, and 39 tandem spaces, which comes out to 78 spaces. There are nine guest spaces for a total of 139 at-grade parking stalls. Off-site commercial parking is requested, which are two spaces per the DA. The architecture of the project is modern-style architecture. The image at the top is located on Oak Street of the mixed-use development. The middle image is the commercial portion located on Bellflower Boulevard. And in the background, you'll see the mixed-use building. And then the bottom image is a view of both the commercial, which has the movie theater, and the mixed-use residential development on the right. This is a view from Oak Street and Bellflower Boulevard, looking at existing commercial development as well as the mixed-use residential development in the back. The project has 23,350 square feet of total open space, 14,350 square feet of total common open space, 2,080 square feet of total public open space, 6,924 square feet of total private patio deck balconies for the residences, and 3,614 square feet of total landscape. Parcel A shows the colonnade as well as the plaza next to the movie theater. Parcel B includes a roof garden on the upper deck as well as an alley with enhanced features and lighting across that connects the two buildings, connected to the two buildings. And parcel B, once again, has a dog walk on the ground floor, a podium deck on the upper level with a pool, as well as cabanas, and then a roof garden, as mentioned before, with seating, garden, and games. The project is subject to park fees. The residential component includes recreational facilities suitable to address the park and recreational needs of the tenants and residents. The value of the proposed private open space is 1,732,800. A maximum of 50% of that value may be credited against the total park fees due per the BMC. The applicant is seeking a credit of 20%, which is 346,560. If the applicant park fees, sorry, if approved, the park fees due to the city would be $343,026. It is staff's recommendation for city council to open the public hearing, take testimony on documentary evidence. After considering the evidence, adopt a resolution number 20-29 and read by title only, way further reading, and introduce ordinance number 1391 or 3 alternatively discussed, and take other action regarding this item. Before staff concludes, I'd like to add a couple things. There's a correction in the staff report on page 5. It should be 94 parking spaces instead of 97. Per the resolution number 20-29, the project is consistent with several goals and policies of the general plan in regards to land use, housing, and mixed use, and consistent with several goals and policies of the TOD specific plan. The project has several conditions of approval on exhibit A of resolution 20-29, which are on pages 18 through 29 of your staff report. The DA can be found on exhibit A of ordinance number 1391, which includes pages 30 to 143. Staff did not receive any opposition for the project during the MND noticing from May 5th, 2020 to May 27th, 2020. However, today, staff received an opposition letter from Attorney Corin El Khan regarding the project, which was provided to council. The developer is available and will make a presentation to council, city staff, and the public. This concludes staff's presentation unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that report, Jason. So why don't we open it up for questions from my colleagues in the council? Let's start off with Councilmember Hamada.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, thank you for the report. Jason, is the parking consultant on the line? Or you're going to cover any questions related to parking?
I don't believe the parking consultant is here, but the developer, the applicant, is here.
Oh, all right, so yeah, you'll have to- The, again, it was a thorough parking analysis and some of the general questions always pop up. It's, again, they use IT, you know, sampling, and if you might know what they, when they use the IT, was it, because they break it down into a bunch of categories and do you believe there was enough sampling from the IT for this type of project?
The parking demand study, if that's what you're referring to, surveyed several different cities related to developments that were associated with metro lines regarding mixed-use development and how parking, those types of developments, when they're next to the train station, requires less parking. So yes, I do believe they did submit enough studies for that to show that the, to show how the development is parked at 1.5 per unit.
All right. The Belmont Court project, was that parked at the same ratio? The the Belmont Court project, was that parked at the same ratio?
I don't believe it is.
Oh, it's not at one point five?
No.
Was it uh more or less?
Uh I I don't have the information on front, on front of me, but I can get back to you.
Councilmember Hamada, this is Elizabeth.
Yes.
I can help answer that question.
Oh, thank you.
For Belmont Court, um the residential was parked at two spaces per unit. There was a combination of two and three-bedroom units for Belmont Court. All of the guest parking spaces and all of the commercial parking spaces were designated to off-site parking lots. Or I should say off-site public parking lots.
All right, so uh what's being utilized on um under the units and behind the commercial? That's that's been adequate.
I'm I'm sorry, I missed that.
Uh the, again, the parking that was designed for the Belmont Court um and were a good portion of its off-site uh uh there's really been no issue with the parking there.
That is correct. To my knowledge, that is true.
Yeah. Quickly on some uh building design uh for the the west elevation of the residential portion. Um some of the uh residential units face the neighbors to the west. Uh I looked at the plans. Do you uh do you recall any added features for any uh any type of uh added screening which uh which may help uh in buffering uh the project, the the higher proj, the higher project from the uh from the neighbors?
Uh screening as in, can you give me an example?
Uh sometimes they add grills that create a, you know, a side angle where it's hard to look down at the neighboring property. But it's, but it's, uh but it's compatible with the design. Uh it it's it's a very good design and it uses multiple uh materials and uh features and it it's not all just one solid wall in the back there, you know, and most of it's the plaza, yeah, the patio, the plaza patio area. Uh so it's all uh, it's just at the end, just at the front end. Mostly probably where you see uh, see it.
So so additional material was added to the wall to be consistent with the other elevations, uh but no screening uh material was provided. There is a, on, I know on the pool deck, there is a fence or screening there. Um but on the building itself, there is no screening.
Uh was was this a uh, is this a LEED certified project? Or is it just uh compliant to green building standards? Or is that part of it? Do you recall?
I don't recall that portion. And the applicant, the applicant is here and they can answer that.
All right, maybe that's uh, we'll save a lot of that for the, um maybe I'll and I'll just one more for staff and then I'll I'll let it, I'll let the others. Uh um I know in the area, there's been the issue with liquefaction, especially on the parking structure, but um and uh the environmental uh addressed that, of course, as possible. My recollection is uh based on the uh studies done for that, for the site, subject site. There is no major issue with uh liquefaction.
Uh that will be addressed to the plan check process uh when the applicant submits uh project uh project plans, construction plans. Um there are uh water vapors on the property, but the applicant will uh uh mention that during their presentation.
All right, uh and just maybe one more on, just on the environmental document. Uh obviously, that was prepared uh like earlier, which obviously covers more than than uh what's necessary. It makes reference to grading of about five thousand cubic yards. And there's also showing some retaining walls. Uh the project appears all on grade now, so I I recall something where the project changed. Where there may have been originally a a a subterranean component, partial subterranean, but that's no longer incorporated in this project?
Uh correct. All the parking spaces are at grade, so no subterranean.
All right. Uh I'm sorry, one more in my mind and that'll be in regards to the trash enclosure. I know in past, we've uh we've seen and, you know, discussed this project a couple of times before and uh trash for the existing retail on the corner of uh of Oak and uh Bellflower. Uh they get to utilize the uh the trash room that that'll be designed for the uh uh project. I see a trash room.
Now, can I get back to you on that question?
Well, yeah, 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 when you have a chance to look at the site plan. There's a trash room that looks like to cover everything. All right, I'll leave it at that and maybe something later for the applicant. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. And I know some of these questions I think you have will be able to be answered by the applicant.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe he has a presentation um that he's gonna be presenting as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Mayor Potem Kupps.
Mayor. So have we ever, is this the first project we've ever allowed tandem parking to occur?
Uh no.
You've done this before? What project was it?
Uh Belmont Court.
All right. So that was our, probably our first endeavor in tandem parking. When the square footage for these units is calculated, are the outdoor porches included in that calculation? Or is that porch in addition?
That's that's in addition.
One of the things I've noticed in the projects we've just completed is many times the areas outside the, those porches become less than attractive with bicycles and plants and trees and sofas and stuff. Not to say they shouldn't exist, but I'm wondering if the developer would consider having enclosed areas without, they show to be pickets that you can see through. Um but it really detracts from the site of the building when you have tenants in there that are using that as outdoor storage and it looks like the dickens. Well, you got a beautiful building and all you see is the things they don't want in their apartment. I wonder if that's up for discussion.
Uh that's a good point, Councilmember. Um.
You know, you've seen what I've seen, Jason, on the Boulevard in the Belmont Court building. When you sit at Johnny Reb's, it looks like a some sort of a uh swap meetup there, you know?
Right.
But I'd like that my viewpoint to be considered because we're gonna have a lot of different uh porches at four or five different levels. It could really detract from the appearance. When we get to the point where the applicant makes his presentation, will we be able to ask him questions or do you know the the value of these units, the one and two bedrooms and what they will sell for? Or do you know what that is, Jason?
Uh no, that's a question for the applicant.
Okay, okay. All right, that's all I have at this time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Potem Kupps. I believe these are rentals.
They're rentals, yeah.
Thank you. Um Councilmember Santiness.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Uh Jason, um so you clarified that these are rentals. So in this staff report, there's a mention about an association. Can you, can you talk about that? What's the association for?
Uh so the the applicant has the intention of um turning these into condos, so the association is associated with the condos.
Association of condos, oh, the, just the renters.
No, no, it's so, the intent is to uh at some point um sell the units, so the the association is associated with the condos at that time.
I mean, are these rentals or for sale?
Uh right now, they're they're proposing the as as rentals right now.
But they could be sold later on.
Correct.
Okay, I see. All right, now, um so I'm waiting for the applicant to make his presentation, but in the meantime, one more question for you. In terms of the um, the twenty percent credit. So in this staff report, you mentioned that a maximum of fifty percent of the value can be requested for credit. So why twenty percent? Why not twenty-five? Why not thirty, fifty? What's, what's the basis for twenty percent?
Councilmember Santiness, if I may, so we had a long discussion with the applicant regarding park fees. Um if if the council were to approve the maximum amount of fifty percent towards the park fees due, then the applicant would not be required to pay any park fees. Um and in looking at the project, it adds ninety-one new units, which adds several new households. Um from a staff standpoint, we didn't think it was reasonable that they weren't obligated to pay anything towards the park fees. So in talking with the applicant, we uh settled on a twenty percent number. Um we thought it was pretty reasonable that they would have to pay a portion of the park fees, not not, and uh we didn't think it was reasonable to not pay anything uh just given the amount of people that were um being added. And so the applicant came up with a credit of twenty percent, and we thought that was at a reasonable value. Um and that would still result in a park fees due of three hundred and forty-three thousand and twenty-six dollars. So it was a negotiation process with the applicant to come up with that fee. Uh we both settled on twenty percent. If the council thinks that they should be credited more, um that's something for consideration tonight.
Have we, have we given credit to other applicants before?
Uh to my knowledge, this is the first time that we're utilizing the recreational uh facilities credits. Um there have been applicants that paid the in-lu fee. There have also been applicants that dedicate land. This is all per the BMC. And this is the first time we're seeing a residential project um requesting for credit. So this is one of the first, actually, this is the first project that's doing so.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, because I don't recall giving a a a partial credit. I think it's the first time that I've seen this.
We took, we took land in lieu.
Yeah, I know, but but not, either either you pay or you you give a piece of land. So this is the first time I've seen a partial credit of twenty percent. I'm just kind of wondering uh in in terms of what's our leeway, is it arbitrary or basically it's arbitrary, we can, they can they can, they could have asked for fifteen percent or whatever percentage, as long as it is no more than fifty percent, right?
Correct, and that's actually under the council's purview. Um the BMC does allow the council to approve up to fifty percent. But it's really in your, under your purview if you want to do something less than that.
Okay, now, in in uh on page three on on parcel A, I'm just kind of curious here, it says fifty-one hundred square foot commercial space with forty-seven fifty square foot leasable area for future retail restaurant use. So what's the balance gonna be used for? It's a very tiny space of three hundred and fifty square feet.
Jason Clark, can you comment on that? Because I believe the fifty-one hundred was a typo.
Uh no, 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 it's it's uh for the trash enclosure. The remaining is the trash enclosure.
Or the three fifty's for trash enclosure?
Right.
Okay, okay, okay. I I think for clarity, I think you need to add that so that we're clear what's gonna be used for.
Gonna have more than one container then? Because that's like a two-car garage. Three hundred fifty square feet.
Yeah, it's about three cars. Okay, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much for that, Councilmember Santiness.
Uh excuse me.
Please go ahead. Yes, please.
I forgot about this. There's so many notes here. Uh in terms of the mitigated negative declaration uh for the benefit of the public, can you address the issue of liquefaction and the the hazardous materials? How are those being addressed?
Um I wanna leave that to the applicant. They have something in their slide to address.
Oh, they do? Okay, all right, wonderful. And then um and finally, for staff, can can you comment on the um the opposition letter that we received today?
Sure, I can comment on that. Um so we did receive an opposition letter um late today. Uh we only had several hours to review it. Um from a staff standpoint, we do believe that we have met compliance with the code, specifically the BMC, um in all aspects. They, our review is supported in the findings that are shown in your resolution and ordinance. Um in relation to parking, we do believe we are consistent with the code. And again, further, there are findings that do support that analysis, both in the resolution and the ordinance. Um regarding the mitigated negative declaration document, we do feel that that was the most appropriate document for the project. Um a full-on EIR uh would be required if the project shows significant impacts or mitigation measures. Where the, where the impacts wouldn't be mitigated or couldn't be mitigated. And that's the time when you go forward with a full EIR. Um with this project, we went with a mitigated negative declaration because we found that the impacts that are caused by the projects could be mitigated with mitigation measures. And there are mitigation measures that are incorporated into the environmental document. Um there was a twenty-day public review for the mitigated negative declaration. It was sent to several stakeholders. We did get responses from five of those stakeholders. Um none of those letters were received, uh excuse me. Out of the letters that we received, none of them are from the people that wrote the opposition letters that you received today. From a staff standpoint, again, I do believe we are consistent with the BMC. We've met all the required findings and also all of the general plan findings.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all for now.
Not a problem. Thank you so much, Councilmember Santiness. Um I don't have any questions. Everything was either answered by the questions that was posed tonight or from the staff report. Um so with that, why don't we um go ahead and open uh a public hearing? So I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Do you rather have the applicant make a presentation first before we do the public hearing, or do you want to do it?
Well, that's part of the public hearing.
Okay, so you'll make it, okay, you're making part of it.
Oh, excuse me. No worries. It's okay. It's rather you get it right, so um I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Sorry, okay, good. So I have a motion by Councilmember Santiness and a second by Councilmember Hamada. Uh without objecting, that will be the order. So up next, uh before we open it up for public comment, why don't we have uh the applicant's presentation, please?
Hey, guys, this is Jason Tolson from Serrano Development Group. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. So let me uh, as soon as Jason uh Clark is able to take his share screen off, I can put mine up. Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Okay, can everybody see this okay?
Mr. Santiness? You good?
Everybody can see?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, okay, well, uh thanks so much for having me, albeit virtually. Um I was disappointed not to be able to do this in person after all the work uh we've done with uh staff and the community to get to this point, but uh we're thrilled to be here um and show you what we've done and answer any questions. I think I can um touch on some of the issues that were, that came up in the staff presentation and maybe elaborate a little bit at the end if uh if you're interested. Um so what I'm gonna do today is I want to walk you through through a brief animation of the project. Um give you a status update, a brief uh history of the work that's been done up until now. Um a very short project summary. Most of it was covered in Jason's presentation, so I'll keep that short, uh very short. Uh, very short, uh, explanation on the project branding, uh, floor plans, and then I, we have some, um, exhibits to present, uh, to answer questions if, if you need it. So with that, I'm gonna roll into the, uh, the video here for everybody. Okay, so hopefully that was helpful for everybody to get a feel for, uh, the aesthetics and, and actually, uh, good example of some of the, the screening issues that were, uh, talked about a little bit earlier. I have some more diagrams as it relates to that. Um, but anyway, I, I thought I'd run through briefly kind of how we got here. It's hard to believe it's been, uh, two years since we signed our, since we first, uh, uh, looked into this RFP and a year since we've signed the PSA. Uh, but we've been working hard, meeting with your staff, um, on a regular basis to advance the ball. Um, we got our planning application in, in December, and, and here we are, um, with a, with a very, uh, uh, thoughtful entitlement package. Um, currently, what we're doing alongside of this entitlement effort is engaging, uh, the, the remaining of the design team members. So we've, uh, hired a structural and a mechanical and electrical and plumbing engineer, um, some branding consultants, uh, of course, the architect and, and, uh, civil engineers are on, already on board. So we're, uh, standing by to release them for construction drawings to get into plan check, um, which we expect to do in, in this fall. Um, we are also working with the, uh, the water board, uh, to deal with the envi- open environmental case. Um, we, uh, have, have some more detail on that in the, in the presentation, but, um, it's a complicated process to remove or mitigate, um, the, the contaminants in the soil. And, and so we're very close to the finish line with that, but, um, still working through it. Uh, we're expecting to start construction the first quarter of next year. Um, a very rough, uh, duration of twenty-four months. Of course, we'll try, try to do that sooner, uh, but just for planning purposes, that's what we're saying here. So that means we'll be delivering the product, um, in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Uh, Jason touched on a lot of this already in his presentation, so I won't, um, uh, reiterate some of the things that he talked about already. But you can see a mixture of, uh, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, a little, uh, little bit more on the ones. Um, ninety-one total units and one point four-three stalls per unit. We can talk about parking ratios in a bit. And then, um, the, the commercial building, we're repurposing the existing Greek market with a really interesting colonnade feature on Bellflower Boulevard to make that, uh, frontage very pedestrian-friendly, a, uh, public courtyard immediately across the street from the parking structure to really tie those two projects together. So we tried to work as hard as we could with, um, our designers and staff to integrate the project into the fabric of what's already there. Um, the branding for the project, we're calling it Edgeway. Um, if you don't know, Edgeway is a, uh, a form of railway in which the road is causewayed up to the level uh, of the top of the flanges of the railway. Uh, we felt like, uh, some nod to the rail infrastructure was appropriate, given the location, but we wanted it to be subtle enough where it was, you know, um, something that's kind of interesting for the community and for potential residents. And then the, the, the separate meanings of edge and way, um, are also kind of, you, you know, we felt, um, interesting, uh, metaphors for what we're doing with the project. As you can see the description there. Um, zooming in on the residential, uh, floor plan, um, to answer Council, Councilmember Hamada's question, yes, all the parking is on grade. Um, we do have tandem stalls for the two bedrooms. Um, so every two-bedroom unit has two spots and every one-bedroom unit has one spot in addition to nine, yes, stalls. Um, this is consistent with other projects we've developed, uh, similar style, and, uh, we think we'll meet the market. The parking demand study is a very detailed analysis to uh, demonstrate that, um, our, our stalls on site will exceed the demand. So, um, I think, uh, pretty good solution with what we've got here. Um, just a few features to point out. Uh, the trash room's oriented up on, uh, Main Street on the northwest corner of the site, right next to a bike storage and repair room. This is an enlarged bike storage, um, really meant to encourage uh, bicycle, um, use and, uh, in a convenient, uh, and safe place. Uh, there's a dot, we have a dog run on the west side of the property. Um, the building on that side is set back fifteen feet from the property line in deference to the neighbors. Uh, this required setback is zero, so we wanted to, you know, give a little bit more space over there. We thought a dog run was a good way to use it. Um, you can see the, the parking stalls are all labeled. I can answer any questions about that. We have, we have a small retail space in the, uh, northeastern corner of the site and two residential lobbies. One is the main lobby with, um, you know, the mailboxes and a little bit larger kind of the main entry. And then we have a separate exit, um, out to the public alleyway for convenience for the residents. And as we move up to the podium level, this is one floor above grade. Uh, we have a pool, uh, in, in the central courtyard with the, with amenity spaces immediately to the south, a club room, a game room, a business center, and the leasing office, all clustered in the same area. So this is gonna be a highly amenitized space, uh, for, for residents to use. And the whole western edge of that pool deck is screened, uh, for the privacy and convenience of the neighbors. Um, this is zooming in on the pool deck a little bit, so you can see some of the features. Um, it's gonna be a resort-style pool, very, uh, nice amenity for the residents. Um, and then one level up on the third floor, we actually are gonna have a gym and a roof garden looking down into the pool deck area. So it's kind of a really nice play on the massing with the project, so it's not such an overwhelming, um, you know, mass that it's, it's got articulation to it. And then as you move up to the fourth and fifth floor, you can see, um, on the south portion of the site, there's, there's nothing there really. We stepped the building back. It's also a, an effort to be, uh, thoughtful to the surrounding community, um, and, and have, uh, less of a an impact to, to those neighbors. Um, jumping over to the theater and retail plans, um, you can see, uh, your four-screen theater, uh, planned in the back. Um, and then retail in the front, uh, with the colonnade showing up on Bellflower Boulevard. And a little bit more detail on the, the spaces we plan to build it out on that building. Um, with the colonnade, we spent a lot of time working with, um, with both planning and public works to make this, uh, not only interesting and cool, but safe. And, um, you know, so the, the colonnade, uh, is a, is a pedestrian thoroughfare effectively on private property. And so, you know, we're, we're working, um, and we will continue to work through plan check to make sure that that is, uh, seamless from the public's eyes. And, uh, there's a nice kind of covered walkway to widen what is now very narrow and, uh, uh, doesn't feel somewhat dangerous feeling sidewalk. So this has been dramatically changed the way that, that, that looks and feels. Um, and so with that, I'm happy to answer questions. I have more information, um, on, on really on all of it, but I thought we'd stop there and give you all a chance to, to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Tolson. Let me open it up for, for questions for my colleagues here. Mayor Proton Coops?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you explain to us your philosophy on why it is you would offer them as rentals with the potential of becoming a home, a condo for sale? What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, happy to do that. Um, typically, when we develop multifamily projects, we'll file a map to subdivide it, and that really is just to provide flexibility for us on the exit whenever we decide that, you know, that, that the investment in the property has come to an end and we want to sell it. And sometimes, in certain markets, the condos are the highest and best use. Um, and sometimes apartments are. Um, our intent is to develop this and hold this long-term. So it's really just a value add for when we eventually sell it. But we will have to go through the entire process of subdividing, including, you know, the preparation of CCNRs and establishing the HOAs. Uh, but they'll just basically sit there dormant if and until we actually decide to sell off individual units.
So each unit has its own washer and dryer laundry area?
Uh, they do, yeah. Yeah, in fact, I can flip to some floor plans here and show you. Um, so here's a typical one-bedroom and a typical two-bedroom. Um, the ones range in size from six hundred and fifty square feet to eight hundred and fifty, so they're pretty varied in their, in their size, uh, but all, you know, um, I feel pretty well laid out. Uh, you can see the WD there, those are the washer dryers. They all have their own, uh, um, in, inside the unit. Um, so yeah, that's part of the package.
Do you have any provision for solar on this building?
Um, the, the green building code is gonna require that we put in the infrastructure. So that's the conduit runs from the electrical room to the roof and the deck space, uh, on the roof dedicated to accommodate future solar. Um, you know, the economics of solar panels kind of changes over time, so we haven't really gotten so far as to decide whether to actually install them or not, but whether we do right away or not, we'll have provisions for it, uh, regardless.
Didn't State of California cause the, all new projects to have a solar component, or this is exempt from that?
Um, you know, staff could probably give you a better answer on current, um, building code requirements. Uh, the most recent project we did requires the infrastructure, not actual panels, um, when you, when you first build it.
Okay. So what do you think, uh, the one-bedroom or what do you hope to rent them for?
Um, you know, it's, it's really hard to say with everything that's happening in the world, um, predict rents a couple of years out, but, you know, we have to underwrite something. So, um, you know, it would be unfair.
I'm sure your under one's an idea.
Yeah, right. We, we have to, we have to pick a number and, and hope that we can get it. And so, um, yeah, I'd, I'd say, uh, it's, it'd be on par with other luxury apartments in, um, other markets nearby. So the, the one-bedrooms, you know, they're gonna be, you know, around two thousand dollars, I would say, maybe a little bit less. And the, and the two-bedrooms would be around three thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more, a little bit less. Um, depends on the, how high they are up in the building and the exact size and, you know, different little, um, features that each unit has that are unique to that unit, but that's a rough range.
Two years ago, when you took us, I believe you were part of the, you, you took us to different cities to show us the projects you had done. And, uh, as many people develop, uh, the dog is part of their family in an important way. I remember you showing us one project where you actually had a dog washer. Are you gonna do that on this project?
I'm gonna do the same thing here. If you can see on this, uh, on this, uh, exhibit here, in the dog run, that will include one of those, uh, stainless steel dog wash, uh, showers. Yeah, they're, they're pretty neat, and, uh, that's a, that's a feature that a lot of people use, actually.
I dare, that'd be the only one in Bellflower, if this is approved. But it left an impression on me that, uh, or you could always have your dog sent out, I'm sure. The, uh, the height of this project, will it be equal to or greater than the fire museum, which I think is, it sets a standard, is it about the same?
It's gonna be pretty close. I don't know the exact height of the fire museum, but I believe they're very similar. Um, I wanted to show you, you, you all this, uh, exhibit. I think this is, uh, useful as it relates to building height and massing, more importantly. Uh, you know, building height is, is, uh, you know, what, just one part of it, because the building can change in height, and it's important where that happens to make it look, you know, as good as it can, and, as good as it can look. So we terraced the building from east to west because on the south, on Oak Street, we're budding, uh, a single-family home, or maybe a duplex there, but a one-story building. And on the, on Main Street just to the west is a two-story apartment building. So we, we increased the setbacks from what we thought, from what was required in the code. Um, we limited the openings on the west side for privacy to those neighbors. Uh, we put screening in the courtyard for the, the pool deck, um, and, and adjusted the massing on the northern side, in, to a lesser extent, but in the same spirit of trying to reduce the, um, the overall impact and make it feel like it fits in, so. Um, tried very hard to, to ki- kind of fit it all in, but do it in a way that, you know, was sensitive to everything else going on in the community.
Earlier, I'm the one who made the comment about how the, the decks can become a storage area that's very unsightly from down below. Do you sympathize with my concern, or what do you think?
Yeah, no, it's a real issue, um, and it's a good comment. Um, I will say that the balconies vary a lot, and, uh, that's by design. Some of them are inset, so, you know, it's not the pickets that are hand-livering out over the sidewalk that you were looking at on, on one of the elevations, although, although we do have those. And some of them are set back with solid walls, and it, and it varies by the architectural style of each elevation. So, um, first thing we do to mitigate that is we put a lot of storage in the unit. Uh, you know, the, the, the main reason people put things on their balcony is they don't have anywhere else to put it. So as you can see, both, um, floor plans have ample closet space. Um, in the two-bedroom unit, there's two walk-in closets, and then there's separate storage, uh, elsewhere in the facility for the residents. So that, that's one way to, to handle that. The other is, you know, just having, uh, really strict, um, rules in the lease when we sign up the tenants that, that kind of behavior results in, in fines and, and, uh, you know, deter them from doing that, because, uh, there's nothing worse, I, I completely agree with you, than having a brand-new building and, and, you know, a bunch of, uh, uh, somebody's junk sitting out on their balcony for everybody to look at. So, um, we will make certain to manage that, um, for your sake and for ours, um, so, uh, we don't have that problem.
I appreciate that, but it's just, well, you get it. It's unsightly and doesn't add to the building's value at all. So when you do elect to, if and when you elect to go with homeownership, you said that would be when you would decide you're gonna sell the property. Does that sound right? Is that, is that how I understood you?
Yeah, so, you know, if, it really, we're, we're gonna meet the market, right? So if, if there was a very strong demand for condo sales and maybe a waning demand for apartments, it's really hard to tell, um, you know, where things are headed in, in the current climate. But if that, if that were to happen, uh, we would be in a position to be able to sell the units as condominiums. That is not our current plan. Uh, our preference is to hold, develop and hold long-term, um, but- But we had the the subdivision and the association and the CCNRs will all be drafted and recorded and ready to go if we were to make the decision to do that at the time.
Now, you're always putting your sticking your neck out because the city could change the ordinance as to what a condo consists of.
Yeah, you know, it's not, it hasn't been the top of our focus because, you know, like I said, our our plan is to keep these as apartments. But having the map, it takes a long time to go through the process of subdividing. And so having the map just gives us flexibility in the future.
Are you aware of what the percentage of non-owner, non-owner homeownership is in Bellflower?
I'm not.
Sixty-eight percent? Non-owner occupied?
Yeah.
That's all I have at this time.
Thank you so much, Mayor Proton Coops. Councilmember Santenaz?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, thank you so much for for staying with us. And I think this presentation is the Jason Show, right? Jason Clark and Jason Tolleson. Pretty good. So my first question here is can you talk about the mitigation on the liquefaction and the hazardous materials?
Sure. Okay, this one is a little bit of history for everybody, but bear with me. So the original source of the what's called TCE is basically dry cleaning solvent and related chemical called PCE. Is in the, we thought was the plume basically on the on the site plan on the left hand side of your screen, which was very small. This was based on the data of the water board from 10 years ago when the person that owned Brian's cleaners was cleaning it up. And the problem with TC is that it migrates like crazy. And so when we actually went out and sampled the the site to determine how it needed, how it'd be mitigated and to get a clearance letter from the water board to allow us to build our project, we discovered that the plume was much larger than we originally anticipated. And so, and in fact, it was large enough where it encroached into the the Greek market parcel, which we never thought would even be a remote possibility. So it it basically initiated another round of testing as recently as a few weeks ago. We were in the Greek market building doing borings and soil samples. And, you know, have come up with a mitigation measure, working with your staff and the water board that everybody seems satisfied with to make sure that it's safe for the for the retail patrons and the residents. And effectively, that the mitigation measure is a layer of plastic, for the lack of a better term, underneath the slab of the living space in the residential building and to be determined in the theater building. So that's been kind of an ongoing process. We're nearing the finish line, we think. But it's been quite a bit more complicated than we originally anticipated and quite a bit more costly. But we're bearing with it and pushing our way through and we're almost done. The liquefaction is a separate issue. That is a pervasive problem throughout the the area just because of the geology. And so really, the way that we handle that is through our structural design of our foundations. It it was significant enough where it deterred us from doing any subterranean parking. So that's why the parking is all in grade. And then the structural system for the building is what's called a mat slab. And basically, it's a big thick layer of concrete that the whole building sits on top of. And it acts kind of like, it kind of like floats on on the liquefying soil in the event of an earthquake. So it's a it's a very well known and tested strategy for designing buildings in these type of zones. It's not the only way to do it, but it's the way that we felt was safest and most cost effective.
If I remember correctly, in one of the proposals you had and one of the ideas you floated around was to create subterranean parking. So that was the reason your, the all the parking is at grade.
Yeah, it's the two reasons. That was one. And the other is when we realized the extent of the plume. You know, when you dig a subterranean garage with contaminated soil, all that soil has to go somewhere. You know, and it's a it's it's very expensive and challenging to to deal with that. So we were able to kind of design around it and more or less keep the the spirit of of what we're trying to do from the beginning intact. But make it a little bit more efficient and 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 avoid some of those really complicated technical issues.
Okay, all right. Thank you. The other thing I want to ask you is how how many employees do you expect to be working there full time? In the condominium portion?
Oh.
Because I think I saw there's going to be a leasing office, right?
Yeah, so there'd be an onsite management team and for a building this size, it's probably five or six people.
Five or six, okay.
Yeah, and then in the in the commercial building, you know, it kind of depends on who the tenants are.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, so the the parking in the, just focusing on the 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 residential units for now. The parking, it says enclosed garage. So the park is going to be limited to the tenants or owners only of the units? Jason, did we lose you?
Oh, can you hear me?
We didn't hear you.
Oh.
Oh, I did not hear you.
My answer, yeah, my answer was yes, that's correct.
So all the 130 parking units will be enclosed exclusively to the tenants or owners of the condominium units?
That's right.
Okay. So in the staff report, there's there's 130 residential parking units and then nine guest units. So the requirement is, what's provided is 131 in the enclosed garage and then eight guest parking, right? So only one parking, one guest parking will be within the enclosed garage?
Right.
Correct?
That's right.
Okay. So where do you expect the the guests to park if you have six, five to six employees?
Well, the employees would park in either in a guest spot or they would park in, you know, the available public parking in the district. That's probably the more likely scenario.
Was that counted in the parking requirements in terms of the employees?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head if that that parking demand study is pretty meaty. I would be surprised if it didn't contemplate that.
Yeah, because I'm assuming you have full time staff like maintenance, leasing office and things like that.
The the people that come to to service the building, that won't be full time. You know, we'll have landscape service that will come and do their service and then they'll leave. So those people would park in probably in a guest spot or on the street. Or in an in an occupied unit probably is more likely. You know, we're not, these units won't be in all likelihood 100% occupied 100% of the time. So there'll probably be some stalls and inside the garage.
Well, no, I'm hoping that you you sell all the units or you rent all the units. That's my hope.
Ours too.
Okay, so I'm
There are rentals that, you know, there may be a few extra spots. But yeah, I think where they really would belong is in the guest spots because they they're going to be coming and going. And that's that's the the easiest place.
So so the bottom line is they might be using public parking, parking space eventually.
It's possible, yeah, it's possible.
It is more likely. Anyway, also in the staff report, you meant, it was mentioned that on page eight of the staff report, it mentions about creating two parcels out of three. Can you explain the reason behind that?
Two parcels out of three. I'm I'm not, I'm not sure.
There's three parcels initially.
Oh, why we're going from three to two?
Okay, the 16411 Bellflower Boulevard, 9735 Oak Street and 9742 Main Street. In the proposal, it's showing that you're creating two parcels. One is for the commercial and one for residential, I think.
Yes, yes.
So you're confirming that. So what's the purpose of creating two parcels?
The the purpose of creating two parcels is that we can own and finance them separately. So that they're they're distinct from one another. And it's a little bit of a nuance, but we can obtain more favorable financing for the multifamily portion if it isn't also connected to a theater and retail and probably simplifies it actually for the theater and retail if it's not part of a larger project. It's all, there's also a potential that the ownership composition will be a little bit different from one project to the other. As you all know, the the Lumley's are part of this project as a whole and they'll have some ownership interests in the theater portion at a minimum, but and their percentage may be a little bit different than in the residential portion. They're they're minority stakeholders in both, but you know, the their interest in the theater will be likely a little bit larger than the multifamily.
So which will also allow you to basically sell one of those two parcels?
Yeah, that's right. They could be financed or sold independently, which just gives, it's it's kind of like our our plan with the map just to get, provide flexibility depending on what's happening in the marketplace.
Okay, so talk about the Lumley. Where are they now in terms of this project? Because at some point in time, there was some kind of a, for lack of a better word, hesitation?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me give you an update on that. So we just got our DC, this is a photo of our project up in Santa Clarita. And I I don't believe we went up there on the tour, but I think most of you probably seen photos. We just finished this. We got our DCO a couple of weeks ago. Lumley is in the process of fitting out the seven auditoriums with their FFNE screens and seats and planning to open in a couple of weeks. So they're almost done. You know, the it it's hard to predict the future for really any business in the world today. And so I can't tell you with certainty what's going to happen to the business. But I can tell you they are currently not in any sort of financial distress. They're waiting out this. You know, the 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 rules from the public health officials about going to movie theaters. They're opening up the large house auditoriums with social social distancing practices. And, you know, they're chomping at the bit to be able to, you know, do more. And so they're still moving forward with this project. This is another picture of the same project, just so you can get a feel for what it looked, came out to look like. And then our project in Azusa is also with Lumley. This is under construction right now. This has got a four screen Lumley Theater, their partner in this deal. They're still fulfilling all of their financial and and operational requirements. So no, no, no signs of any, you know, financial distress. The company's not for sale or contemplating bankruptcy or anything like that. So as we sit, as we sit here today, they appear to be a, continue to be a committed and solid partner for the project. You know, I think like like everything, we're we're all kind of waiting to see how the world changes over the next six to 12 months. And and their business is especially sensitive to that, but they're well positioned, I think, to ride it out.
Yeah, I think I think you know where I stand on this because for me, from the very beginning, seeing your proposals, the thing that really sold me was the theater. And it's a Lumley because you sold us, you sold, at least you sold me into it because there's no other Lumley in this, in the area and nothing south of the 10th freeway, nothing in Orange County. So it's not like the Edwards, the Corian, the Pacific. So it's something that's special. Because where I'm coming from is those theaters, I mean, their competition is coming like Netflix, Amazon, Apple Plus. But the Lumley is so so special. It's got its own market, so to speak. It's got its own following. So if we don't get that, I'd be very disappointed.
Yeah, we feel the same way. I mean, they're a partner. This is our fourth project together. And they came to Bellflower because they felt like there was an audience there for their product. And they still feel that way. So, you know, I I I have the same desire to see this come to fruition. And, you know, we're doing everything we can to make that work.
All right, thank you. Let's say for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santenaz. Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, thank you for for the presentation. Jason, could you put up the good neighbor diagram that you had earlier? Yeah, that one. So as you look at from this side, Maine is on the north or the top side and Oak is on the south side. So the units on the very end fronting Maine, you know, five levels there and those windows. To be a good neighbor, are you incorporating any designs to help with view, views, view impact kind of, kind of situations between neighbors?
Well, on that portion of the site, what we did was we stepped the building down one story as it moves to the south. The biggest impact, I would say, is the setback. We put a 15 foot side yard setback there when zero feet is the requirement. So it really, you know, that will make a huge difference in terms of light and air and just kind of the the feeling of, you know, the building being so close. If you put a two story building on the property line, that would be a lot more invasive than a five story building 15 feet away with, you know, fewer windows and and reductions in massing and all the things we try to do here. That that was our, that was our goal. I mean, you know, we're we're trying to be sensitive as possible. That the the other thing we did was fewer windows on that side. So there are some, I mean, we have to have them in bedrooms. You can only do so much, but we 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 really minimize the the amount. No balconies on that side. So you can see there's a, you know, it's as good as it possibly could be for that property line.
Yes, the 15 feet helps with the buffer. It's just, it's the height differentials that probably will cause neighbors to to be of I wouldn't say, well, there's probably concern, but maybe again, Jason, if you were to think of any, any, you know, possible design components as the architects are are looking at that face there, especially the one along Maine, you know, fronting Maine. You know, some some kind of add-ons that that's compatible with the overall design and will help with with what kind of pairing the the views downward to the neighbors. Could you go to one of the floor plans of the entire project that show both trash enclosures or trash rooms?
Sure.
Yeah.
Maybe this one?
Well, the, yeah, the one on the commercial, that's the residential, right?
Yeah, this is the residential. You want to see the commercial?
Well, let's see, we can start with the residential. So that's in the northwest corner of the building.
Exactly, yeah, it's a it's a large trash room with
Because of the multi-story, do you then utilize trash chutes?
Yes.
Okay. So somebody will be, some of your staff will be maintaining that, moving bins, you know, switching over bins as a, yeah, okay. Somebody will probably be at some point cleaning the chute. Let's go to the commercial. All right, that's at the, so down on the picture to the right there, so the the white floor space there, that's the trash room. Looks like it has eight rectangles, so eight bins.
Yeah, and and to answer your question from earlier in the session, we're, this is a, this is a room that's communal for also for the retailers to the south.
Down in the corner, yeah, okay.
We're demolishing their current trash enclosure so they can use this one.
Okay, thank you for that confirmation. So parking, oh, the overall building design, green building standards and does that go along with any any LEED certification? I know it adds expense, but green building standards generally are 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 still good too. Just don't get the added designation. So are are you aware of any LEED certification that goes along with this building or the buildings?
Yeah, we found that in, you know, with with the current Title 24 and green building codes that codes that all new buildings in California are subject to, they all qualify for LEED Silver just, you know, as, as a matter of course now. It's not anything special we have to do to the building. So the, the cost is in the certification.
Yeah.
And you can go through and document that you did all the same things that you would otherwise normally do and get the certificate. We typically don't do that because, you know, our, our feeling is that we'd rather put those dollars into building enhancements and other green building features than, you know, than paying to have them certified. But, you know, that, that doesn't mean we can't. We just hadn't really thought about doing it on this one.
All right, that's understandable. I do like the colonnade, the frontage, definitely a street front features of activity and, and it looks like the way you designed it, it looks like if down the road, the properties to the south are acquired or developed, then that could be extended easily if it falls under your possession.
We'd love that. I think that's, you're right, it's set up for that when, if and when that were to happen.
All right. This is very exciting. Again, I've been looking forward to it. Hopefully, the partnership with Lumley comes through and it'll be, what, number five then, huh? So, oh, and so some of the conditions refer to CCNRs and so, and you had mentioned that during the rental time, you're going to probably put it under leases, but maybe the other, Jason, can comment about compliance with those conditions if, because, well, down the road, again, you had mentioned about the subdivision and so that's a separate approval and CCNR is obviously with that. And Mr. Coops' comment about the outdoor storage is, is definitely valid and obviously those would need to be put in, in the CCNRs.
Yeah, but they'll be put in the CCNRs and in the lease agreement so that we have a ability to enforce, you know, people not doing that because we don't want that either.
Yeah. So Jason, Jason Clark, do you, do the conditions list any reference to compliance during the timelines only rentals?
For the CCNRs?
Well, are you going to have the CCNRs cover the project during the rental stage?
The CCNR was designed for the condo stage.
Yeah, that's true. HOA.
Right.
What about during the rentals, at the rental from the beginning?
No, staff didn't have any for that portion.
All right. Okay.
We'd be fine with that, we'd be fine with that as a condition.
Yeah, probably should be documented.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you, Jasons and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hamada. So I, I really don't have any questions on the project itself. And I'll comment on, on the project itself at the end, but really, the one question that I did have was for our city attorney. And it just kind of struck me as we were, as I was hearing some of the questions and just to get that certainty that, of what we're going to get here, we, I know that when we embarked on getting Steelcraft, there was a, a need for insurance that what was going to go in there was going to be in there for a while. And so I was hoping that maybe the city attorney can kind of guide us on, in terms of the development agreement and its content to see like, like how long are these elements going to be there? These uses?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. As the council is aware, this is, the entire project consists of various documents, all of which fit together. And really, the development agreement is sort of the overarching document that integrates everything. So all of these things that the council is considering tonight are all integrated into the DA, which, and the DA is the expectation between the city and the developer for those uses to occur. And Beth, correct me if I'm wrong, the DA is 20 years long, is that accurate?
Yes, I believe so. Also, I can find that exact date, but I do believe so.
Yeah, that's my recollection off the top of my head. Double check. It's a 20-year period over which this development would, would be constructed and take place. And so once it's in place, the uses that are expected both by the ordinance, by the development agreement, by the tentative map and what have you are all in place. I should point out also, what is not in front of the city council tonight, but what the council had already approved was, was the purchase and sale agreement for the actual property. This property is owned by the city and so part of the conditions of the purchase and sale agreement are, for example, that the assembly use on the property be used for a theater. And there are various provisions that are put into that purchase and sale agreement to ensure that that continues on even after the title conveys from the city to the developer. That's a very brief thumbnail sketch, but hopefully that answers your question.
It hit, you hit the nail on the head for me. Thank you so much. I just wanted to, I just give that assurance, everyone, as we consider this, that there are some elements that I think were, were surprising to us. We were hearing for the first time in terms of like the covenant for, for a potential condo use, which, which again, I personally don't have a problem with, but, but because of some of these, these latest bits of information that we've gotten tonight, I just wanted to assure the community and my colleagues that there are some safeguards built into the development agreement that, that you gentlemen were very wise enough to, to make sure that were locked in for us. So on behalf of our cities, I do appreciate that. That really completes my, my questions with regard to the presentation. Any last minute questions for the applicant before we go to public comment?
I've got one.
Yes, sir, please.
So. I'm looking at A 37, unit. Two A, A 37, unit two A, and it depicts the floor plan for one of your two-bedroom units. If you can find that. What I'm seeing here, and correct me if I'm wrong, so when you walk into these, enter these units, you're standing in the kitchen. That's your entry into a kitchen and then the living room is behind the kitchen. That's what, now here's what's odd to me. You have a bedroom, you have a walk-in closet, you walk through a walk-in closet and there's the bathroom. Usually you go through a bathroom and then find the walk-in closet. Am I, am I getting this right?
There's a hallway there, you don't walk through the closet to get, if we're looking at the same thing.
Right, did you see? It's on the right-hand side of the photo?
Yeah, so from the master bedroom to the master bath, there's a hallway that doesn't go through the closet. There's a separate door that goes into the closet off of the hallway.
All right, but you can see what I'm looking at. It looks like you're walking through a closet to go to the bathroom.
Um, no, that's not the case here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, there's a, it does look a little bit like that, but it, that's a little walkway, a little hallway between the master bedroom and the master bathroom separated by the walk-in closet, but you don't actually go into the closet to go to the bathroom.
Anyway, if you say there's a hallway, I just don't see them in the photo.
Okay.
It's on the page.
Take my word for it.
Eight thirty-seven.
But that was my concern.
Oh, it's okay, maybe we'll get different floor plans. You know, sometimes councilmember Coops, or Tim Coops, the, there, we have configurations where you might have sliding closet doors on each other side of a hallway.
Okay.
Leading from a bedroom to a bathroom, that may be what you're looking at. And that's, that is one of the versions of this that I think is in, maybe a different two-bedroom floor plan. But it, you, you wouldn't actually be in the closet, you'd just be walking by sliding chairs or solid wood core doors.
Yeah. But you can see what I'm saying here.
I understand your reaction. Thanks for clarifying.
That's all I have.
Hey, Jason?
Just quickly, maybe this goes to the city attorney. The, the parking license agreement for the nine spaces, that would allow nine parking spots in any of the public lots.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Just this past weekend, I had driven over to the parking structure, it was just in the area, and I noticed parking on the, towards, more so towards, what called the terminus of Pacific. So, and obviously those cars parked there didn't look, obviously walked, probably due to the commercial, but more so maybe somebody visiting maybe along Pacific. So I just only give the impression that this is going to be open for all residential because when someone hears, oh, residential, they're allowed. Okay, yeah, they have an agreement, but they're not going to know that and so it brings others that are just going to say, ah, it's a spot, I can park. So I just, all right, I just want to be sure about that. So it's spread across the entire parking area that we provide. All right. And I've, I've seen that design in redland homes. Oops, sorry.
Where the bathroom is?
Yeah, you walk right through the closet and there's double, yeah, sliders on.
All right. I'm old school, you know?
Yeah, no, these are, these are different, these are unique. You know, I, I do have one question. I just got, I have a question that was texted to me. So the question I have is, in the theaters, in the women's restroom, how many stalls would there be in there? Do you have any idea, Jason?
There's a code formula for how many lavatories you need depending on occupancy. I don't know off the top of my head exactly how many there will be, but it will meet that code requirement. The, the exact size of these rooms will shift around to accommodate whatever those code requirements are. The women's room will probably be a little bit larger than the men's room just because of the plumbing fixtures that need to go in there. And I could find out, I just, I don't know that off the top of my head. We'll develop that through the construction drawing phase.
When we get the answer, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So any more questions before? Yep, yep. Okay, great, great. So why don't we open it up for the public to comment or have questions regarding this project? So Madam Deputy City Clerk, would we have anybody from the common wish to make any, anybody from the public wishing to make comments right now?
Yes, Mayor, I'll give the public just a moment to utilize the raise hand feature.
Not a problem, thank you. And as that's going on, I would just like to thank the public for sticking around. I know it's a late night and again, appreciate their patience.
Mayor, I'm not seeing any public comment at this time.
Okay, great, great. I believe we have a Ms. Karen Thomas? She haven't have any? No? We're done? Okay. I guess she's not with us anymore. So with that, then I will, any last comments before?
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to kind of rub my head around this one here. Question to staff, right now, the city owns 9735 Oak Street, right? And that's the parking lot.
Can you hear us, Sonny?
Uh, 9735 Oak Street, the parking lot. The city currently owns that, right?
Yes.
Okay. City Attorney, what's the status of, in terms of the transfer of this property? What's the status of 9735 Oak Street? Have you done anything on that?
No, sir, sir. The, the status is pending.
But we haven't executed any documented transfer, okay. So right now, based on the staff report, there's 56 parking spaces on that lot, correct? So, um, once we abandon or leave the space, parking space, where were, there's four commercial spaces on Bellflower Boulevard? Commercial, existing right now, Kingdom Causus, where will they park? In this rupture, okay. So how many, how many parking spaces will be transferred to the city?
Uh, 94.
94 spaces?
Yes.
Okay, 94 spaces, all right?
So, sorry, if I can clarify, so that's based off of the proposed commercial areas as part of the project. So the 94 spaces is based off of the floor area ratio of all the commercial and that by code generates 94 spaces. Those 94 spaces would be designated to public parking lots.
Okay. Mr. Stewart, in the meeting we had in April, I asked for a parking study. We figure we do any parking arrangement. We haven't done that.
Mr. Dahl Longo, when did you present that parking study? We did this about a month and a half ago.
Yeah, it was, I believe, it was dated March of 2020 and it was, it wasn't presented to council in a meeting, but it was provided to them through the weekly updates.
Correct, and we showed a surplus of the downtown with the structure of what, 134 space or something like that, I don't remember.
Two hundred and thirty-five.
Two thirty-five.
Okay. In, in terms of the value, any parking, parking spaces, did we come up with any numbers?
No, we haven't found a good number for that yet. We're still working on that. The number will, it will range somewhere between 10 and 30,000 or so, but we're not there yet on that. We're still playing with that formula, looking, doing, surveying the cities. I will have that to the council soonish.
Yeah, regarding this, I really liked the project from the very, very beginning. The, the, the theater to me is very special, very special. The condo residential, it's special, but anyone else can do it, you know? The other commercial piece, it's a special, but not very special. So I'm just looking at these numbers here. So we're, we're going to give them, part of the arrangement is we're going to give them the parking lot, 9735, which is almost 34,000 square feet. Free, okay?
It's included in the purchase price of the land.
I know, but it's.
So we're aiming for free, yeah.
It's our contribution.
Yeah.
Okay. The parkland fees, they're asking for $246,000 in credit. We bought the property for 2.1 million, we're selling it for 1.59 million. So that's a, we're contributing 560,000 dollars towards the project.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I should point out that part of that price has to do with the restrictive covenant that's being placed onto the property in order to.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just.
Just reminding the council.
Enumerating, yeah, I understand that. I'm just enumerating what our contribution is towards the project. And then the park, the transfer of parking of 94 spaces to the city. Value, I would say, 10,000, 12,000 dollars per space? 20,000? I'll be generous, 10,000. That's nine, almost a million dollars. So I'm just judging the main numbers here, it's close to 4 million that we're contributing. And we're not sure we're going to get the Lumley. It's not sure, I mean, they, they could back out. So I'm just trying to put my hands around this. Did it say 11 million?
Jason, could you, Chelsea, could you ask the question, the total worth of the project?
Yeah, let me, let me speak to some of that. You know, I guess the, the value of the property is, it's important that we purchased it at fair market value and that's what I believe we're doing. You got to remember, it's got a giant environmental issue that adds a lot of uncertainty and risk. And as the city attorney mentioned, there are restrictions that further devalue the property. And as the city attorney mentioned, there are restrictions that further devalue the property, which is how we arrived at the number in the first place. So I think that the notion that it's important that it's, that this is an arms-length fair market value transaction, that's how we've tried to structure it. In terms of, you know, the value of taking commercial spots onsite and putting them in the public infrastructure, that is not unique to this project, that is an arrangement that's been used on lots of commercial developments in in the city and frankly, in other districts like this because the rationale is, you know, if you're able to encourage people to walk a few blocks from a parking structure across a bunch of storefronts to an anchor like a Laimly Theater or Steel Craft, it helps all the retailers in the district. And it encourages development because, you know, frankly, it's expensive to build onsite parking and so, you know, it just, it just really revitalizes an area like this, so it's wonderful that we have that collectively as a tool to, you know, encourage the the growth in projects like this. So, you know, I guess, we did an analysis to show the the payback in property and sales tax incremental tax revenue over a period of time and so these assets that the city has and is selling are not only going to be receiving a fair price for the outright purchase, but also revenue in perpetuity from, you know, that that tax revenue that's incremental and new. So, you know, there's a, an opinion of value that was commissioned when we negotiated the purchase and sale agreement that was, you know, an independent third party that validated the price was reasonable for all the factors that I just mentioned and so I'm hopeful that, you know, you see it as a as a win-win for the community and and for the project and that, you know, the entire district will be better both financially and, you know, in lots of other ways as well.
Well, I'm not trying to minimize the contribution towards property tax and sales tax, in the staff report, it mentioned about twenty thousand dollars in property tax and thirty thousand dollars in sales tax. So that's fifty thousand dollars a year, but that's. That's not a big thing for me, but the thing, the big thing is our contribution towards the project. It's just an enormous amount that we're contributing.
Yeah, Jason, you didn't answer the total value of the project for the mayor pro tem.
The total value of the project, I'm estimating it at somewhere around thirty-five million.
Thirty-five million.
Is that the question, the what it's?
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just gonna bring it up because it's, it's just a, to me, it's a, it's a great project, I mean, don't get me wrong, I like the project, it's just the contribution that we are putting into the project. Because I thought that they will provide a lot of, I think the main, the main issue to me is the the transfer of parking. Seems like all the commercial parking is transferred to the city, all of it. And I think I remember because, so I asked the question about liquefaction because I'm now, they're willing to spend money on the subterranean parking, if it worked for them.
But they've abandoned that idea.
I know, so, because I think that would have solved part of the commercial parking issue.
I think that the discussions early on in that project were that the commercial parking would go to the public parking district on that and it's exactly the same deal that we struck with Belmont Court and the others there, I mean, the fact is we are subsidizing the use and through the downtown's parking capacity, we are subsidizing the cost of building these projects, that's unfortunately part of it and we're probably years away from having a downtown that's gonna break even. The council, I will predict right now, will have a similar decision to be made when it develops the Bank of the West Building sometime in the next year or so, we get projects and unfortunately, that's a part of it now. And the the commercial rents and and the return that they get on that investment will not justify the creation of municipal parking in downtown, it's just not there yet.
Well, I I fully understand, I think we're, we're on this project and we're willing to do subsidy, but not to the extent, when I was working on the numbers last night, I mean, just blew my mind, when I started adding it up. I mean, I know that we agreed already on the purchase price, that's, that's a given, I'm just kind of bringing it up to your attention. So that, I mean, for transparency, so at least we know what we're getting into here. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a huge subsidy. And to me, the bottom line is, it's the Laimly, that's the project. Because I think any developer can build the condominiums. Maybe not as, as good quality as Serrano, but can be close enough. Anyway, that's my question, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you so much for that, Councilmember Santenaz, I just, any other comments before I make mine, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So I, I, you know, the council member brings up a valid point and I think it should be put out in public, I don't think, I think you've done the right thing. I I personally feel that I think the value that this project will bring to our city and to the downtown is gonna be repaid in a long-term, in a long-term way, I I think in my opinion is if we think that steel, not to diminish Steel Craft, but if we think Steel Craft is a catalyst, like this thing is gonna be ten times the catalyst of a Steel Craft. Not only with regards to the theater itself, but also with regards to to the the ready-made residents that are gonna be in this unit that are gonna feed the economic development and all the businesses within that downtown area. And I think that in itself, that spending power that they will bring and support the downtown area within the surrounding area, I think it's gonna be, I think history will show it, it's a wise investment that we're making. I, I just want to thank Jason, you know, I know videos like that, that he made with this project are expensive, so just the fact that he invested in that, I appreciate the the brand itself, I personally, I like the brand. I think these types of developments are, they're not your typical apartment. They're not the apartments of the sixties, seventies or eighties, these are absolutely a different animal. I've been to many of them, I have, this is not a client, but I do have clients that work in this level of product and I can tell you that it's very, very special. And the fact that Bellflower itself is potentially at the cusp of having something like this, I think it's gonna be transformative for our, for our community in a very positive way and in fact, when I hear from a lot of our, our next generation that talks about this, that knowing that they've been to projects like this in downtown or in other areas, they, I know there's an excitement amongst amongst them for it. The amenities that are in this project are in line with what you would expect a high-quality development to have and just in seeing all the amenities down to the concrete paving that goes, that you drive into the parking area is, again, of the highest quality that you can get with this type of development, whether it's in downtown LA or if it's in Manhattan Beach or here. So I feel like the developer didn't skimp on any of that. I think to the council member's point, you know, obviously, we're subsidizing part of that, but I'm happy with the fact that if we're gonna contribute any level of funding, that it's quality, right, it's not a project that's cutting corners here. I, you know, and I just want to remind all of us that at the end of the day, this is a transit-oriented development, so a lot of the uses that are gonna be in here, a lot of the, the residents are gonna be transporting themselves via that that rail that's coming in here within the next, within the next year or so. That'll line up some of the parking elements from my perspective and to the city manager's point, I think when we built that parking structure and we have that surrounding parking, I think this is exactly what it was designed to be able to feed and support. And so I, again, I, I support the project as is, I think some of the elements that were brought up, like from the mayor pro tem in terms of the visibility and even council member Hamada in terms of the ensuring that the, that the, there's a buffer between the residents there that, but this project, I think, are valid and I'm happy to hear that the developer either has addressed them or will address them, has committed to that. So again, that's, that's good, and so again, for me, it's, you know, and I'll make this the final point, it's, I really think that it just aligns with the future of Bellflower. And so I'm, I'm really excited about this and that just completes my comments. So, I'm not sure there's any more questions or comments, gentlemen, before we close the public hearing?
I have one more question, Mr. Stewart, did you explore the possibility of them paying some kind of parking fee?
No, not for, the only thing we ensured, the only thing that we held firm on was to ensure that they covered the basis for the residential parking. As far as the commercial, we never looked at them trying to paying a fee for it, in fact, we sort of dangled the carrot out there all the time that we could absorb the commercial parking demand because it wasn't a great demand, because we knew there was gonna be a hell of a lot of square footage for the parking. So, no, we did not.
So if we are absorbing all the parking requirements of the commercial?
Yes.
And then main events is, have an event on the same evening, how will the parking look like?
Oh, I think it'll be fine. I mean, I think that there's plenty.
Seventy-eight parking spaces?
Well, no, I mean, you understand, we are in the middle of a commercial parking district, so we saw the parking that we currently had plus the addition of the, of the structure itself. So I think with the parking that's behind the buildings that are both north and south of Oak Street on the east side and obviously behind the buildings on the west side of Oak Street and the parking structure itself, I think we'll, we'll meet the demand, we'll be there.
Well, if you remember correctly, sometime during the Christmas season, we were parking, starved, so to speak. There was no parking.
Correct.
And a few events were canceled at the main event center.
Exactly, but the main event center also.
We're gonna lose fifty-six parking spaces on the west side.
We added two hundred and seventy-eight spaces and the parking demand, the most parking you would need even for a three-hundred-person event at the main will be something between a hundred and seventy and two hundred parking spaces in the worst-case scenario. So I believe that we'll meet the demand, no matter how we slice it on that. I'm not, I'm actually not worried about the parking with the additional spaces that we've created with the structure. And certainly, if we don't meet all of it, we'll meet most of it. Yeah, I mean, that's not a concern that I've had once the parking structure is opened. Before it was open, absolutely, it was a big concern. But it'd be a good thing to have that parking structure filled and all the other spaces filled behind it, means we're doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, gentlemen? Nope, alright, so I entertain a motion to close a public hearing?
Okay.
Alright, so I have a motion by Councilmember Santenaz and I have a second by Councilmember Hamada, without objection, that will be the order, so. Gentlemen, what are your thoughts regarding this?
Well, I think the findings are, are there to support the project. I think I'm okay with the, the credit. And so if it's leading to a motion, I can do that.
Absolutely.
But again, I, I, I agree with the comments of, in relation to parking and I think, I mean, we're gonna, we're, we're, first off, we're blessed to have these, these parking lots and so, so and that's how we can utilize them to draw quality projects, so. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty dash twenty-nine and, it says, and read by title only, wave for the reading, and I will introduce ordinance number thirteen ninety-one.
Alright, so I have a motion by Councilmember Hamada. I, okay, great, I have a second by Mayor Pro Tem Coops. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Santenaz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Coops?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Mayor Garza?
Aye.
Great. That's a big decision, gentlemen.
I think that's the biggest project I've ever approved, anyway.
Yep, that's a big decision, so I commend you. So with that, I know it's pretty late in the evening.
Wow.
Let's see, item number fifteen, council reports, Councilmember Santenaz.
Thank you, Mayor, Mr. Stewart, I'd like to schedule a study session so we can assign a value for parking spaces, because again, I don't want to go into another parking arrangement without a value.
It's fine, I'll probably do that. We have, we will likely schedule, it won't be July, it won't be the next meeting, but we'll get that done in August for you.
Anytime, anytime.
Yeah.
You have, you have your leeway, as long as we do it before any parking arrangement is made again.
Yeah. We're not going to, just for the record, we're not gonna see this again in the downtown until we get to the Bank of the West Building, so next time, we're gonna see it. And right now, we're holding pretty firm on our parking demands on that, but that's.
So I, I'll hold you to that statement, okay? Alright, on, on June eleventh and eighteenth, I attended the SCAG demographic workshop, it's a two-day event. It's quite fascinating in terms of the, the census, it's been delayed because of COVID nineteen and they've, they've so many challenges, particularly on the counting the college students and counting the residents of group homes because, again, because of COVID nineteen. So they stated that the report due to the precedent will be delayed by about four months and the redistricting will be done, will be delayed also to July. This week is National Mosquito Control Awareness Week, so I encourage our residents to please tip, toss and take action on the water in your backyard. City staff will be posting a video on our website, it's a very cute video about cleaning up your backyard in terms of standing water, so I encourage you to please watch that video, it's very nice. So with that, Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Santenaz, Mayor Pro Tem Coops? Great, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Coops, Councilmember Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just quickly here, on the ninth, I attended a, okay, I, a I C S C teleconference and the, and the topic was big boxes to new uses. So it obviously made me think about the Kmart site, so it was, it was interesting, yet, yet some of the thoughts that are going out there are still challenging, especially when it comes to changing, you know, consumer minds and one of the speakers really dwelled on converting the big boxes to uses that would require consumers to, to order online and then they pick it at these stores. And there are stores out there that just strictly focus on that, trying to remember some of the names, I have it on my notes, but so, but other than that, you know, the usual mixed-use projects and combination service-related and residential and so on, so, but it, it was, it was a good presentation and as with, as the councilman Santenaz, I did also join in on the SCAG, you know, demographics workshop and I did catch some of the little tidbits about how, you know, housing is, is still obviously the big topic, but in the SCAG area and then some of the consultants said that there's still close to thirty-eight percent of the owners in the SCAG area that have two extra bedrooms in their house and they're not using them. Those kind of things make you kind of wonder and obviously apartments are, you know, overcrowded. Fifteen percent of all apartments are overcrowded, they say, and, but I did wanna do a shout-out to Bellflower for their, what could, self-response on the census, so we, we are ahead of the state average, I think, when I checked today, sixty-four point four to the state sixty-two point seven. And the studies show that, you know, eighty percent of the responders are using the internet. And they're not mailing anymore, they're. are using the internet and they're not mailing anymore, they're, so they're getting online and and taking care of it that way, so again, thank you, Bellflower, for participating, uh, we, there's still time. So it'd be nice to hit the uh seventy, seventy percent. Um, um, uh, did wanna do some more shout-outs, uh, again, um uh, the YMCA finished their thirteenth week of food distribution to the Belfour Unified School District kids and uh the meal count for thirteen weeks and actually, they started the fourteenth week today, but for thirteen weeks, they've served over one hundred and fifty thousand meals, so and uh just last week, um, uh, you know, Calvary Baptist participated in food distribution by um uh working out something with um um, it's a um, it's it's a company, a um, a nonprofit company uh called Convoy of Hope. And uh they send out food uh throughout the nation um during disasters, and this is disqualified as a disaster. So uh, Calvary Baptist received over fourteen tons of food and and drink and uh, uh, they were able to pass it out to at least seven or eight churches here to pass out to their own congregations that that are in need. But also got food to um uh Kingdom Causes Little House and also Carrying Connections received it, and we cleared all fourteen tons out of the uh Family Center, so um, a big shout-out to the church there, so that's all, good stuff, and uh thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, great stuff, uh, I just, I don't know if you know, council member, what the response rate was for the last census, do you know?
Uh, well, um, you know, oh, yeah, the initial, not offhand, yeah.
It's okay, uh, we're close, sixteen percent.
Sixty-eight, alright.
So, uh, we're almost there and we still have time, like you said. Um, for me, just uh, just three items, one is on June ninth, I actually participated in a homelessness summit that was uh hosted by our gateway council of governments, um, I don't know how I got onto this summit, but uh, the other, there were three presenters, I was one of them, the other two were um Phil Lanzo from the Homeless Initiative and the other person was the uh, the homelessness czar for the White House, Robert Marbut, so um, it was, again, an honor to represent our city uh and present our model here of addressing homelessness in our city. Uh, on the seventeenth, the city manager and I, um, we were here in this chamber with Judge Carter and a multitude of cities and we did a presentation on our model that was really well-received and I think uh the cities had an opportunity to ask some fortright questions, just the way we did um, last year and um, so that was good, hopefully it's a start of of some solutions for them as well, and then last but not least, I just wanna thank staff uh really for just everything, uh, you know, it's the first day back here in our chamber. Um, so they're trying to ensure that we don't contract COVID, we have these Plexiglas items here, right, and on top of that, um, dealing with merging you know, a a traditional uh video feed of our council meetings on top of the the next generation of 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 transmitting this through Zoom, um, and it's not easy and I know that we had our a little uh learning curve earlier today, but uh nonetheless, I'm not surprised they uh they figured it out and I just couldn't appreciate them more for all they do for us and and for the long night tonight, so uh again, thank you, staff, thanks to everyone that stuck around and lasted till the end of this meeting, uh, it is let me see, I am gonna adjourn to the next regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council at five-thirty PM on Monday, July thirteen, twenty twenty, it is eleven fifty-one by my watch and this meeting is adjourned.